You're wanting to move this along.
Yeah, moving you on.
You can hardly stand it, you have to do your presentation. So, now's the time to open it for public comments that are limited to the items on this agenda. So, anyone has a public comment that they'd like to make, limited to the agenda items, now's the time to do it. Or we will also open it up when the items are discussed. Okay, seen them? We'll go straight to the first item on the agenda and I'm gonna turn it over to George, to Tira.
I'm talking about Mayor and members of the council. I have a very brief staff report, not necessarily the thunder of the PowerPoint presentation,
Right.
which goes into that same amount of depth. We're basically in the midst of potential renegotiation of franchise extension. With recology through the SPWMA, our franchise expires in 2020. So, the process starts in early 2017 and 2016, we're setting up that process for each of the member agencies. So, the staff report outlines some of those, but Councilmember Whitmer and Councilmember Wees serve as the City Council Subcommittee for Refuge Services. And Councilmember Whitmer has a PowerPoint to walk the council through some of the various issues related to the franchise negotiations and extension.
Thank you. Before we get into your PowerPoint, we just want to make a note that I did not receive page three of four and neither did Vice Mayor. And does anybody else have missing page three or four?
It wasn't four.
That's where all the good stuff was.
No, I don't think you did. Because, did you get options one and options two as discussion?
Page three and four of the...
Of the staff report?
Staff report.
It looks like, it looks like we did receive one, two, three, four, but if you look at actually, it goes from...
Four of four.
No impact and potentially RFP for collection services online, so there's...
Missing page three?
Yeah.
I'm missing page four.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, missing...
I meant, guess I didn't read it as a PowerPoint.
Yeah, you did. Page three.
Yes, you did.
But I got it.
You just skimmed right on into that. So, we didn't get options one and options two.
Those options are, are though within the PowerPoint presentation that we can...
So, we'll just probably get up to speed as quickly as we can without having to then have to study them.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't look at your staff report, because I looked at it before we accepted.
Yeah, it, it just might have been a copy.
We didn't.
You're right.
Staff got it.
But I feel better than you guys, no.
Okay, so there we go.
Okay, so, so essentially, what this presentation is, is gonna do a couple things. First off, many, many of you have not really been associated with this or gone through the contract other than the brief discussions we have on the rates, primarily when we're talking about the green rates and the collection costs. But we have some decisions we have to make in the next, actually, the next three years. And we're moving forward as a joint powers association and going forward. So, I wanted to have a presentation that would educate the whole council as well as, you know, try and help us make final decisions so that we can move forward. So, essentially, without going through the agenda, just say, you know, why are we having this session? If the contract runs out in the end of 2020, why are we talking about it now? While our current franchise agreement and the agreements with every member of the JPA says that by the end of 2017, we will all make a decision whether or not we would like to continue with recology. In which case then we would avoid the cost and the process of going through an RFP, or we can do an RFP, et cetera. But we have to make a decision during the 2017 calendar year to meet and confer with recology and decide how we wanna move forward. So, the process is really starting now. And we can work independently, we can work with the JPA, or just go along with the JPA however we want. So, we've got to decide what we want, what type of services we want, and the process we'd like to move forward with. So, you know, just kind of a quick overview, we're just one of 11 other jurisdictions. And Carrie and I have been participating on the, as board members since electeds got appointed to the board. Prior to that, there was a technical advisory board and either George was, and George is still on it. And before that, Danielson was on it. And so, staff managed it, but then, as you, Elizabeth, you know, a couple of years ago, we decided to make a change because it was really the electeds that bore the brunt of major increases in trash rates. And so, it was a feeling that maybe the elected should be taking some responsibility here. The SPWMA is also called Rethink Waste and it's got eight full-time members, including an executive director who kind of manages things. And essentially, what they do is they run the contracts. So, they have two first-tier subcontractors, which are recology and SBR, South Bay Recycling. South Bay Recycling manages taking the trash once it's delivered to the main station up in San Carlos. And if it's recycled material, then what they, they run it through our automated processes and get the paper waste all compacted and sent off to a recycling location. Same thing with the, with the recyclable metals as well as plastics. So, yes.
Is, is the facility in San Carlos, that's a South Bay recycling facility?
No, it's our facility, we own that facility.
Oh, that's...
We're paying for it.
Yeah.
We're, we're paying for it and that would be part of the fee that if we wanted to...
So, so, South Bay Recycling just works in that facility?
That's correct, that's correct. So, they operate it and then they also transport any of the recovered materials to the destinations that we also, that, that SPWMA contracts for. So, they've got contracts with Ox Mountain, they've got contracts with a bottle recycler, they've got contracts with plastic recyclers, and then they've got contracts with, with paper recovery facilities in China. Yes?
Yeah, just, just wanted to effect in 1982, what did we do before 1982? Was there any, what were you doing?
So, I can't tell you. But I know that there's been a series of haulers that have been here.
But what were specifically for Atherton?
Yeah, and, and what they did is mostly collected things and then most of it went to, if not all, initially went into a landfill.
So, do we have a, we have a separate contract with recology and South Bay Recycling?
It's not a separate contract.
Well, well, everything is, is loaded up into our rates. So, we, we only have a franchise agreement that goes...
But, sorry, I didn't mean, I'm unclear, I, by we, I didn't mean Atherton, I meant South Bay.
Yeah, the SPWMA is contracts with all the different locations for recovery or disposal as well as with SBR, as well as with recology. The SBR contract we're not talking about because that has, actually, it's got some very favorable labor rates in there because of their association with the county's VRB program. So, we take people off of the welfare lines essentially and put them back to work.
VRB?
Yep.
What is that?
VRS, sorry, the VRS, vocational program through the county.
Okay.
And...
Vocational rehab services?
Right. I think that's what it's called, I don't know.
I was trying to figure it out.
That's what it's called, do you know what it's called?
Well, I just, you know...
VRS program, what's it stand for?
No, I don't know.
Okay, sorry.
Well, yeah.
But anyway, so, but their contract expires in, in 2020 as well, but it's got three one-year renewable options that the SP, you know, SPWMA can do at their option. So, it's, right now is anticipated that we would continue renewing those for another three years, three consecutive years. But the, the recology contract, we have to make a decision on. And that's either an extension or, or we go out for, for renewal and recology could actually bid on that, if they're not precluded from doing that. Okay? So, the, and as I mentioned also, you know, the SPWMA owns the facility. The facility is, you know, essentially a fifty-some-odd-million-dollar facility. And if anybody wants to go up there for a tour, we can arrange for that at any time. But it's, it's a very impressive facility. Okay. So, we move on, you know, our agreement is essentially a ten-year agreement. And it, it should be noted, and as I pointed out, as we're going through the Climate Action Plan, the public schools are not included in this, which, you know, so, some of the things that are in the Climate Action Plan that we'll be discussing later, we can't really define, you know, require the public schools to, to comply. We can with the private schools and actually, in jurisdictions where those type of schools have actually been managed properly, the recovery rate is, is about ninety percent. Because really, they throw away organics and they throw away paper. So, so that's something we should keep in fact, keep in mind. Our scope essentially is picking up the trash here, where they're doing it weekly, they're picking up the recyclables weekly, they're picking up the solid base, et cetera. We also get two bulk, bulk delivery or bulk pickup services that, that we have to call for and then they're scheduled on your normal pickup day. And then, of course, they do the Christmas tree pickup. They also do other things like the shred event that we had here recently, e-waste collection, codes for kids program, et cetera. And they also provide customer support and they do some self-auditing. They have some programs and they report regularly on their carbon footprint and they do route optimization to make sure that we're in pretty good shape with regards to that. And then they have an obligation, if there was a declared emergency here, that they would help us make sure that we had proper waste pickup and things like that. And they recently did that when we had the floods in San Mateo.
So, I have a question and you can answer it later if it's more appropriate.
Go ahead.
I'm curious as to what the public schools do for waste disposal and what Woodside and Portola Valley do? Because the, the cities in SPWMA kind of are right along the bay area, the bay, not the inland area and I don't know what they do.
Yeah, so, the schools, my understanding is they have a contract also with another arm of recology, that's, is what I was told. And, you know, again, in our franchise agreement, it's specifically called out that they're not part of this jurisdiction.
So, do, do you know, do they aggregate the, the public schools in this area? Do they aggregate together under one, under one hundred?
Yeah, I believe that they, the district got together and the district does their own negotiation. And if we were to want to do our own RFP, I would...
Each district, yeah.
Yeah, and we've got three districts in our town for an elementary.
And then, the circus club?
Circus club is part of our commercial. The circus club and the private schools are what's considered commercial. So, they're under our jurisdiction as well as, there are some other, there are actually twelve commercial accounts and it varies because some of the large home building, they have a commercial contract for pickup. I don't know what Woodside and Portola Valley do at this point in time. I think that they have a contract hauler that comes through. I think it's in Portola Valley, but I don't know off the top of my head, but I can find out.
I think that would be, if anybody on the council is serious about looking to any alternative than extension, I think that would be an important thing to know.
Yep. Okay. Okay, just some facts and figures and since we're, kind of rolls into, hope we're gonna talk about in the next area. You know, our residential diversion right now is, is just under eighty-four percent. Of interest is our diversion, two-thirds of our diversion is really the organics. So, because of our organics and the, the large amount of organics, our diversion rate is, is the highest, you know, in this area.
So, by diversion, that means...
Stuff that, that...
That we're, well, go ahead.
Yeah. Diversion is stuff that doesn't go to the landfill, but it is re-purposed.
Is re, so that includes glass, all the recyclables and the organics?
Glass, paper, and organics. Yeah, so, and our organics could be food organics would be, be considered to be wet organics, which you can also turn into energy. Or in this case, you know, some of the grass clippings and things go out to, to fertilizer locations out in Tracy. Okay? So, about twelve thousand tons are collected last year. You know, our big focus, if we wanna improve the diversion here, has gotta be the focus on the, on the commercial. And that would be the schools and the circus club. And we are gonna be helped a little bit along those lines because there is a new bill that is just going into effect April first that says, if you do, if you generate eight cubic yards of organics waste, then you must divert it. And then, that cycles down to four cubic yards of organic waste next year. And then, it goes down to just four cubic yards of any waste that you're, you have to separate your trash and it needs to be, to the maximum extent, diverted.
So, on these percentages, the higher your diversion, the better, I take it?
Yeah.
Because that means less going to the landfill.
Exactly, and that's what we're trying to do.
And eighty-three percent is very high relative to what's standard?
Yeah, overall, on the, for the, for the total SPWMA, it's, it's in the fifties.
And isn't that, yeah, almost the highest in the county?
We are the highest in our jurisdiction, yeah.
But, but you said that's mostly, three-quarters of it is organics, meaning like landscape? It's mostly landscape, it's not food waste. It's mostly our landscape.
It's the green barrels. The green barrels is a constituent majority of the things that are pulled out of them.
It doesn't include kitchen waste as well?
I know, but that's a small portion of the overall, you know, eighty-three percent, I think.
Right, I just had the, the breakout, what was in the...
Yeah.
That's where you were saying.
Right, right.
Yeah, so, two-thirds of, two-thirds of everything we get rid of is organics. So...
Two-thirds, okay, I thought you said three-quarters.
Okay. So, you see, the overall agency number for residential is sixty-five percent and it's about fifty percent overall when you consider the, the commercial.
I'm more, I'm very interested in that, the point right above that when you say major commercial tonnage from circus club and private schools should be in the ninety percent? I just talked about that, what? That feels like we're underperforming there.
Well, we, we are. And as, you know, I'm on a zero-waste committee and we've had some people come in that have talked about what they've done at other jurisdictions. And they've indicated that, you know, I've said, hey, my, my feeling is it's ninety percent and, and they've confirmed those numbers that, you know, it's paper and it's organics. And the issue has been, you know, training and making sure they have the right receptacles, you know, to, to separate the waste and lead by example.
So, if they don't, sorry, if they don't separate, then what that means is some of their...
Then it all goes into the black bin, so to speak.
Some of their organics or other recyclables are going into a container that goes to the landfill.
Correct. And so, what we wanna do is, is work with our big commercial sites to, you know, to get this fixed. And I've spoken to not only our, the SPWMA, but also Mario Puccinelli, who is the head of the recology group, that we'd like to have some special focus on that area to, to try and improve that. Because that, I think, is a big growth area for us. And, and the commercial, fixing the commercial issue is, is a big growth area for the whole jurisdiction. You know, there recently, we, as, as an organization, we passed an ordinance that required all the commercial activities in the jurisdiction to report. Whether or not they, they, the trash gets picked up by recology, that they would report what they're actually diverting. So, just as an example then to explain this, Safeway, for example, in Menlo Park, when they bring in a truck, they bring in the truck, they bring in the food and some of it's in boxes and containers. And then there's, they empty the trucks. And then, before the trucks leave, they load the, the cardboard and the boxes back in the trucks as well as any spoiled food goes out and it goes back to their depot. But we wanted to take credit for that, so to speak, because that's diversion that, that we're actually feeling here in, in our jurisdiction and we wanna get credit for it, so, as far, as far as what we're doing. So, we passed an ordinance and asked them to self-identify what's going out. And some of the organizations are complying, other ones, we're taking some time to get their attention.
Do we get, okay, so that kind of raises a question. At the circus club, there's a dumpster that is all waste material from the horse corrals. It's mostly some form of sawdust or, or some, some form of bedding material that's broken down. And it includes some of their manure and that kind of thing, but it, it's substantial. I mean, it's, it's a big thing that's hauled away. I don't know that we're getting credit for it being recycled, but it's clearly being recycled somewhere.
Yeah, I'd have to find out where it was getting, under what's, what it was being picked up as and is whether or not we could actually put it into our wet organics.
Yeah.
So, I have one follow-up question about that. You probably said it and I didn't hear it, but if, you're saying that it should be in the ninety percent range? Do we know what it is?
Well, our overall is sixty-four percent.
Okay, so, that commercial flows down to the circus club?
Circus club and the, and the private schools, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Kind of a separate issue from what we're talking about today a little bit, but it feels like, just knowing the circus club and some of the schools, that they would really want to do better than that. And we should be able to... I agree, I, yeah.
Yeah, I do too. Okay.
Right. Now, also, some, some of you independently have talked to me about issues with recology. So, I put Adan's, Adan's telephone number and his email up there. He has recently been appointed as the quality manager for Menlo Park as well as Atherton. So, if there are issues or we think that there's something that needs his extra attention, he periodically goes behind the trucks and tries to make sure everything's put back properly and, and does a grading of the people. But if there's something that's wrong, y'all, I told him that I would pass his name along to y'all, so.
Bill, before you leave that one, maybe three forty-one, twenty twenty diversion target?
Okay, right, so, the, the assembly bill, originally, the assembly, the assembly had a bill that said that by 2020, we would be at fifty percent. They recently updated, a while ago, to say by 2020, we need to be at seventy-five percent as a jurisdiction, as well as, you know, the, as the total operation for the whole SPWMA. So, our goal and the strategic plan that we put together over the last year was our, our attempt to try and identify key things that the agency needs to do so that we can, as, as an area, all meet that seventy-five percent diversion goal. Okay? Okay, so, there have been, there have been some questions on the household hazardous waste. As you know, back in March, we started that program in 2015 where residents can call and they can have paint and other hazardous waste picked up, electronics picked up at the, at the doorstep. And that program started and we've had a hundred and twenty-three corrections. The, the small numbers that are up there are the number of items that are actually in there. So, if you have like twenty paint cans and they come pick up your twenty paint cans, that counts as twenty items in there, so. Okay, so, that contract expires at the end of this year. We're looking at how we could either extend it, but it, the indications are it would be extended at a substantial cost. Also, the county has Tower Road, which is a hazardous drop-off, hazardous waste drop-off facility where you make an appointment and you bring your stuff up there. And so, we, we as a jurisdiction, ratepayers are all paying for that in our county taxes as well as this is kind of an extra, so.
What, what is H, HW?
Hazardous household waste. And so, so we're paying extra and we're paying for it also in our county taxes. So, one of the things that I'd ask the, the interim director and previous director for the SPWMA is to look at how we can maybe work with the county and push the county to allow us to kind of maybe tie these programs together.
Are all jurisdictions essentially in the same boat, paying double, you know?
Every jurisdiction in SPWMA is in this program and when our rates go up, their rates will go up as well. And so, essentially, we're all paying about a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five dollars per resident call.
Okay, but it's in our property taxes as well as we're paying for it twice? Everybody is.
Yeah, Tower Road, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's a counting program.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, everybody's paying about a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five dollars?
That's what it's averaging out based on the number of calls that are going in, yeah.
And if there were a hundred and twenty-three calls?
No, I got that, it's a lot to call.
Which is the thirteen thousand.
That sounds pretty expen, and, and, did you say ten paint cans or ten calls?
No.
No, it's, it's whatever is picked up.
Yeah, it's whatever's picked up. So, you put a call and you say, hey, I'd like you guys to stop by and they'll say, okay, rearrange it, they send you the containers to put it in. And, and that essentially is averaging out to about a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five dollars per pickup.
But this is also the first year we've done this?
We're in our second year now, but, but the other jurisdictions have been doing it for years.
And we have an education component that's attached to this, so, it's, we don't know if exactly, if people are just not catching on. I mean, what I've heard, it's a, it's a dynamite service once you figure it out.
I didn't, I didn't know that.
But the other jurisdictions have indicated, you know, that the numbers that we're seeing when we average out the cost per pickup, it's about the same. So, I mean, people just don't have paint cans lying around. I mean, they paint their house once every several years.
I do.
Well, you should call.
I'm gonna call. As soon as I get finished with this meeting, I'm gonna call, I've got about forty of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on hazardous waste?
Kind of a eight, eight quarters.
Okay. So, let me go up, hold on. Okay, so...
And the alternative to the pickup would be to take it down to San Carlos?
To Tower Road. To Tower Road.
Ninety-two oh two eighty.
Which is where the registrar of voters is. Okay. I wanted to give you a frame of reference.
Okay, so, where are we going as a, as a overall JPA? And the main focus is to get the diversion numbers up to seventy-five percent or higher. And as I mentioned, we're also looking at getting as close to zero landfill as possible, of course. That may get to, you have to burn the trash, which people don't like that, so, so that's an issue. But, so you never can get rid of everything unless you actually incinerate it. But the major development issues for, for the area is not just commercial, but commercial in, in, in the vernacular of the SPWMA is, includes multifamily dwellings. So, apartment complexes are a big focus. And so, there's a lot of money and a lot of time being spent on, on communicating with the apartment owners and the residents within the apartment to actually take the extra time or set them up so that they can separate their waste and get it into the proper receptacles. You know, for people in apartments, they just might have one black bag, it's a small apartment, they throw everything in there and just carry it down to the dump and they just throw it in there. And so, one of our charges is to figure out how can we get more out of it? And how can we actually go through that trash in an easy way? So, so we'll talk about that and actually right now. One of the big things is, right now, we have a single-stream waste processing facility. And what single-stream means is that we put stuff in a blue bin and then the blue bins all get dumped into an area and it goes to an automated process and we separate the, the, the metals and the plastics from the, from the papers. A mixed waste facility says all the stuff goes in at one location, which is kind of how maybe we should have started. But all the stuff goes in and it gets separated on, on a bin into recyclables or this is wet waste that can be reprocessed, this is organics, et cetera.
You're talking food waste as...
As well as everything.
As everything?
Yes.
Food, plastic cans?
Right, all goes in one location and then they separate them.
But not green waste? But not green waste? Not landscaping?
Well, if it's gonna, if it's in a green barrel, then we wouldn't put it in there. But if, if, if people threw green waste into the black bin, they would be pulled out.
Bill, how, how's it done? Will you just dump it all in a single, manually or such as usual, or is, how's it done?
Compounded.
There, there are conveyors with actuators that they can, with the optics, they can see what something is and, and then they blow, they know what the weight, basic weight of something is and it gets pulled off. Some of the stuff is done manually.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a continuous flow facility. And, and there are always some anomalies, like for example, there's a good example, a ski boot. Somebody throws a ski boot away, well, it's got plastics, but it's got man-made materials in there and it's got metal on it. So, that is, it falls into the too-hard area, so it gets pulled out and just goes into, you know, into, into the landfill. Okay? But...
Couple hundred years.
Well, we should go, we should take a field trip up there, it's, it's neat. So, anyway, so the, the cost of the mixed waste processing line is gonna be between thirteen to twenty-four million dollars. Do we need that here in Atherton? Not necessarily. Do we need that here in Atherton? Not necessarily. Is it right for the jurisdiction? Yes. There's programs going on for energy, you know, taking trash, organics essentially, and turning them into energy. And if we do that, we would get, you know, greenhouse gas credits, et cetera, as well as there's revenue associated with that. That's a seven to ten million dollar, depending on how big of a process we decide to go into. There are other alternative collection processes, such as having these trucks that had multi bins. So as they're driving through, say, a heavily populated area in a downtown section, you know, they would put trash in one half of the truck and, and any organics or recyclables would go in the other half of the truck. So it's appropriate there, it's not necessarily appropriate here. We, we're not part of that pilot that's going on, nor do we support it, because really, for us, you know, having a half filled bin in a truck didn't make any sense for us. But it does in other jurisdictions. Also, every other week, trash collection, you know, the purpose there is to force people to put as many things into the green bins and the blue bins by only picking up the black bins every other week. And so, when we briefly discussed that when I put the staff report in there, you know, our feeling was that here in Atherton was that it would cause us to either force people to go to larger bins, which is what they're experiencing, because they're getting ready to do this pilot in San Mateo. People are upscaling their number of bins, and also, the contaminant in the green bins and the blue bins might grow up. So, anyway, so we chose not to participate in that. And there are some health issues that still need to be worked out, because there's certain things that actually have to be picked up and, and they can't wait for every other week. There's incineration versus landfill, that's something that's been some discussion. There is an incineration plant, there's three in California, one is out by Stanislaus, and they actually use it to create energy. So there's a tip fee, you drop your trash off there, and they burn it, and there's a specified tip fee, and then they keep all the energy credits, et cetera. Of course, there aren't that many incinerator plants being built now, because people don't want the air pollution, so, so that's where that is. There's increased outreach and ordinances that we're working on, they can be anywhere from one to ten million dollars. Again, that's not really applicable to us, but it's more applicable to the other jurisdictions.
Because of the multifamily?
Yeah.
And, and the commercial?
And the commercial.
Because our, we can, and because they're larger and our community is smaller, and we can kind of self educate, in a sense?
Well, in a sense, but, but we're, we've already made our numbers, I mean, that's the, that's kind of the lazy man's approach to, we've already made our numbers, so. You know, do we need to continue to invest when we're at eighty-four percent and everybody else is trying to get it?
Okay.
You know? So anyway, other things that are going on and that recology would do, they've got renewed, for example, is convert the fleet to compress natural gas. So there is some cost there, but it has a positive ROI. So if they do that, then of course, there's gonna be cost savings and there's also gonna be greenhouse gas savings. Okay, LED lighting in the, in the facilities up in, in San Carlos, again, that's gonna cost a couple million dollars, but again, it has a positive ROI. And then there's some additional costs. When they, when they get the glass, they break the glass up into small pieces. And there are other contaminants like chewed up batteries that also get chopped up, and those battery contaminants get in with the glass and the glass reprocessor is indicated that they're getting tired of going through and sorting the glass and taking the battery stuff out. So we're going to need to do something to be able to remove any of the contaminants from the glass before we move forward. So doing the glass and doing the plastics, by the way, is a break even or even less than break even proposition. So you don't make money, we're not making money really on glass recycling, and the plastics, at this point in time, with the oil prices as low as they are, essentially, we're having to pay somebody to take it away. So, so it's like, hey, here's, here's our plastic recycling, and by the way, here's ten dollars to go with it.
What are we getting money on?
Uh, we make some money on the paper, although that, that, the commodity prices have, have dropped with the China slowdown. So all of our, all of our commodity costs have gone down, but there is a rate stabilization fund of it, of about four million dollars that will be draining down to keep that impacting our rates.
So what happens with the nickel or dye or whatever we're paying on the pot, on bottles? You know, you go to the store and they charge you five cents per bottle, kind of, where's that, what's that tied here to?
Well, when you, well, these point of sale costs is the same as when you pay for getting an oil change or when you pay for buying a new mattress or things like that. That's supposed to put the, take the cost and it goes back to the manufacturer and they're supposed to be able, supposed to be taking those, those recyclables back or those, those products back and then, then break them down into their, into their.
But here, we're putting, you know, dozens, we put in dozens of bottles a week or whatever into our blue bin.
Yeah.
What happens, that's, let's say it's a dollar's worth of deposit, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, what they do is they take the glass and they break it all up and then it gets put into a bin and shipped out. It used to go to Hayward, now it goes out by Tracy.
Simply, the state gets credit.
That's right.
It seems like a law system.
City manager, city manager has.
Does that California beverage recycling money, is that, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We actually get grant funds every year that comes back to the town, comes back to all agencies, basically. You can buy trash cans, recycle bins, and we've used them to buy bins in the park, about five thousand dollars or so that we get every year, yeah.
We get, okay.
And when, and when we recycle a lot of garbage.
Somebody can, it's took, somebody broke, you know, reached in our garbage can and took out five thousand bottles, they'd get fifty bucks or something, right? That'd go into their pocket, pardon me?
It's illegal, right, to do that?
Well, I know that because, because the state wants the money, apparently, because it wouldn't help the recycling process, right?
Yeah.
But they're taking out your bin.
No, the state already has taken the money.
They're taking out your bin, it doesn't belong to you anymore, it belongs to the college, and they get that.
No, yeah, right, the college.
And my point, though, is every college is not getting any money out of it.
Well, we do get paid back, so for example, there's a rebate on paint. So when the, or the waste management people who run the hazardous household waste, when they pick up the paint and they get it reprocessed, they know all this stuff comes from the SBWMA, they get it tagged, and then SBWMA, for example, just this past year, got like twenty thousand dollars back and it goes into our fund to reduce the rates, but.
Beyond the scope of the.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, the.
Okay, just to make it clear, so we do have these contracts, they're essentially fixed price contracts, but they are, they are reviewed with audits and things like that, and there are CPI indexes that go in there, and I just thought I'd throw this chart in here from one of the charts that we have when we talk about the rate setting. But the SBWMA takes all the costs associated with it, along with their fees, and, and then massages those numbers and we get our piece of it. So our rates do fluctuate on a periodic basis, based on the audits and based on the CPI indexes that have come in to, to affect the recology pickup, as well as additional things that have changed the scope within the contract. And changing the scope within the contract could be, for example, I just mentioned, we used to put our glass out to a place in Hayward where they would then process it. They're being asked to move out of Hayward or have been asked to move out of Hayward, so they're further away, so now we had to actually get an additional trucks, because they're having to drive further, so to move the same amount of material, we need more trucks, because they'll be on the road longer. Okay, so. Okay, Atherton rates, okay, initially, it's been based on what we've gotten as far as what they, what the SBWMA has allocated to us to pick up our trash and our portion of paying for the facility and the operation of the facility out there. Okay, then we adjust it on a periodic basis based on that. We've chosen here in Atherton to then look at our cart size and to help make an incentive for people to have smaller black carts. And we adjusted the prices so that the more efficient, or the least efficient trash users are incentivized to keep the smaller bins and the people with the big bins pay a little bit more, okay? And then most recently, we adjusted the prices a little bit so that we don't get crosswise.
At the higher rate, we have.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And then we've started looking at the green cart, since the green cart was the big cost driver for us, both here as well as at Hillsborough. So between Hillsborough and Atherton, we have rates that are double what most of the other jurisdictions have, so unfortunately. So, how do we, how have we kept our rates for the black bins essentially flat over these years? And why do we think we can continue to keep them flat over the next couple of years? Is because we've actually overpaid early on, and we do have a rate stabilization fund here at Atherton, as well as there's a rate stabilization fund up at the SBWMA, which accommodates the fluctuations in the, in the commodity prices. So with us, we've, we've worked with Robert, and we've got currently, you know, about eight hundred, almost nine hundred thousand dollars in our rate stabilization fund. So as the rates go up and down, or mostly up because of CPI indexes, we've been able to essentially keep the rates at the same and underpay and then pull from the surplus and pay out. And so we envision that we'll be able to keep the rates stable for the next, you know, three, four years. I don't believe if this contract were to end and we would choose to go in a different direction, that there's much of a risk of any sort of contract closeout cost. I went over the contract again today and I just didn't see that there were termination, contract termination costs, as I know you'd asked that question.
Yeah, yeah.
And, but, you know, there are gonna be some fluctuations here and there.
Except for the cost of the facility.
Right.
You know, that kind of thing.
Right, so.
That, that, can I just ask a question? The fund that made her business, that's at recology?
No, we have it here, yeah.
That's in our bank account, okay.
Yeah, yeah, recology, initially, you know, they had the situation where, where in the early year, we underfend it and then they charged us interest.
Right.
Then we asked that, hey, what, we've overpaid, we wanna make sure that we get paid interest back at the same rates. And so there was a big discussion and they said, why don't you guys just keep your own money?
Just keep it in the, okay, all right.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so what do we gotta make decisions on today? First off, we have to say that we would like to participate in the upcoming SBWMA-led discussions to extend the franchise. So what that's gonna mean is, is that looking at the types of services that we would have is also going to look at not only the performance of recology under this current contract, but recology is also looking at the contract and coming back with suggestions as to how they might make it more efficient. Or there are things in the contract, like we do these audits and they always come in with a very low number of discrepancies in the audit. And some of the discussions that we've had at the board meetings have been, you know, is it really necessary that we do these audits at fifty and sixty thousand dollars a pop when everything comes back and says there's no problem? So, so what we wanna do is affirm that we really wanna continue to work with this process that the SBWMA is now going under. But we also need to look at what types of services, and I've listed some, are compulsory and which ones should be à la carte. So I believe that some of the services that are currently being offered are à la carte, some of the pilots that are running are, should be à la carte. And I think that we, you know, as a jurisdiction, need to try and make sure that these things get identified as that. We should look at whatever key metrics we wanna have, if we, you know, there's some other, other metric that we wanna have in our contract. We need to make sure that we've identified those things in the next year or so and try and put those into the contract, at least for us. And we should discuss, each of the jurisdictions does not have the same franchise agreement. Most of them are very, very similar, in fact, some of them are identical, but some of them have, have specific carve outs that actually are saving them money. And it was not something that when this franchise agreement was contemplated in two thousand eight and two thousand nine, that I guess the people that were working on it really thought that maybe we wanted to, maybe we should have a discussion on it. So I think we need to make some, think about that and decide what.
What's an example, what's a couple examples of those carve outs?
Um, well, I think that there's, for example, there's a lot of outreach that's, again, that doesn't apply to us. Do we really need to have that? Do we wanna be exempt from that? Do we wanna be exempt from, you know, and we definitely wanna be exempt, I think, from, from the every other week pickup or, or any cost associated with the, with the mixed bin vehicles?
It's, it's on page sixteen, right?
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Yeah. It, it doesn't say exactly what you're, you know, how you framed it, Rick, but the, you've itemized it. It's continuing with the group process, we can opt out, we can opt out later.
Yeah, we don't have to opt out now, in fact, I would recommend that we not opt out now. You know, it doesn't hurt us to stay with the process. In fact, it'd be silly for us to cut up our doors to spite our face just right now. And it doesn't preclude us from doing our own RFP. And in fact, during the first go around with the franchise, a couple other jurisdictions did run their own RFP. They ended up staying with the total franchise wide agreement, but, but I'm not, but, but, you know, we're going to be developing an RFP with the SBWMA and then we would just tailor it and we would put that out and ask recology specifically to rebid that and other followers to rebid it.
I think that in, at the time that the RFP was, the JPA was being formed, it appeared that, you know, with the rest of the jurisdictions, we'd have a better chance at better rates overall, better service, better rates, they were gonna do new trucks, everything was, you know, so a critical mass and we would get better rates, so. Some better service.
Yeah. But now, now is a different time and now we, now we know where we are and, and, so we should, you know, make, we don't have to make a decision now, but anyway, okay.
And we've experienced, yeah, yeah. Okay.
So, if we continue with the group process, the focus is, you know, we will affirm that, again, there's no risk for us to do, do that. We should push for having the à la carte services, and the majority of the work is, will be done by George. So there is the.
That's why he gets paid the best.
Hi.
So the, the technical advisory committee, not the board, will be working with the staff to try and shape this and to evaluate what recology comes back with as far as savings and then try and move forward. And again, as I said, recology's gonna provide, you know, their ideas on savings and changes to the contract, what they like of the contract, what they don't like of the contract. And, you know, some of the things they may come up with is, currently, they have a, essentially a fixed price, but a definite delivery, a definite quantity thing. So they have a contract today and they had to guess based on what they thought was gonna happen, as how much they would be picking up, how long it would take, how many trucks they would need, et cetera, et cetera. And since the time they signed the agreement, for example, in San Carlos, where they've, sort of, Health has built that brand new hospital up there. There's been a lot of growth in the development of the Baylands and things like that. And so they've had some cost pressure associated with it, whereas here in Atherton, we're not growing, you know, unless we, you know, bring in another area into town, you know, our, our footprint isn't gonna change, and in fact, you know, our, our rate of pickup has actually gone down. So, so some of the pressures that they're gonna have associated with the rest of the jurisdiction aren't the same with us. Now, they've also been negotiating contracts and healthcare agreements and things like that with their people. They did it last year and then they'll have another contract renewal before this actually runs out. And, you know, there's discussions, some of the other jurisdictions have passed through, for example, healthcare costs and things like that, which I wouldn't recommend that we would consider, because that's not really, we're not negotiating with them. So, you know, we wanna make sure that we got a good contract that we can control and we have, you know, we don't have too much variability in our rates, because that causes our issues with our, so, okay, so anyway. If we choose to not stay with the JPA, we say, hey, we don't wanna be part of that. Uh, we can exit, but we need to get approval of the other, several of the other board members, uh, and we would have to pay our portion, what's deemed to be our portion of the outstanding bond that's up there. And, uh, my calculation was, well, their fin- finance calculation was about one point seven million dollars, okay? And as we add the other twenty or thirty million dollars, that number will go up to well over two million, yes.
So this is the four fif- four fifths of the JPA board?
Yes, correct.
Not our board?
Correct.
Right, and so out of there's twelve, right?
Right.
So four fifths, uh, would that be difficult to achieve or, you know, what, what would our leading mean to the existing boards?
Well, I don't think we generate that much waste, uh, you know, but I don't know, uh, I wouldn't broach, even guess what, what, how they would vote. Uh, and I think the key thing is we would have to pay our portion of the, of the, uh, uh, of the bond, that's the big issue. I mean, what, right now, we're, Ed is carrying, probably would also confirm, or we're seeing in many other, uh, many other JPAs. Some of these other jurisdictions like the fact that, you know, we're, we're not generating too many problems, but we're paying for more than our share. So we don't pay based on population, we pay on property tax value.
Well, that's. Right, and city manager.
So, yeah, just to echo some of that, the SBWMA has a budget, it's an independent agency, we pay a portion of that budget. Our franchise costs are different than the SBWMA budget. SBWMA budget is shared amongst all the member agencies, we have a percentage of that, that percentage is.
It's based on population.
Yeah. Well, it's based on our audit values, yeah.
Oh, oh, not population?
No.
Oh, because like at C K, it's based on population and.
Right, so those costs that we, that it would be divided up amongst all remaining member agencies.
Right, do we know what that, that.
Unless they, the outreach is somewhere else.
Do you know what that amount is?
What we're paying of the total operation, um, well, it's, of the SBWMA portion, we're paying about seven percent. When they originally did the allocation, we picked up about ten percent.
So their, their property tax is going to SBWMA in addition?
No, 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 no.
No, it's just garbage fees that are.
Yeah.
But, but from our town budget we pay.
Yeah, yes.
So, but you'd said that it was based on property tax?
No, 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 I said unlike, you know, uh, like, like other, uh, JPAs where we pay not only based on property or on headcount, we also pay on property values, I mean, so we're funding things that are really outside of the form of the receivers.
But, but in this case, this, in this case, we're paying on actual use.
Yeah.
It's not on our property values, so it's much more equal to what is used.
Well, actually, it was, actually, it's used. Well, no.
Why not?
When the original numbers came out, they were based on an allocation that has never been divulged to us as to how our numbers got set. Okay, so when the total cost was allocated out, they looked at all the rates and then they said, this is kinda what, this is Atherton's portion. And now Atherton's portion then goes up and down based on two things, the audit, okay, and also the CPI.
Does it got to the rates?
The original allocation, the original allocation, which is what we always had been complaining, Jerry and I were complaining, Jer Carlson and I were complaining about was there was never any real correlation of what the total cost was that we were getting assigned, the three point one million dollars that we were getting assigned to how much it costs us to do the work.
Okay, but, well, you're familiar, are, are you familiar with what the other members of the SBWMA are paying for their garbage collection?
But whatever that number got set, we got stuck. Yeah, I can get all that back.
Yeah, and is, are we basically on a per-residence basis, it's about the same?
No, our rates are, are more than double.
Our rates are double?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lisa, you have some, uh, insight on that.
Well, I go back before.
Yeah, yeah.
Way back. You go way back.
Yeah. But our rates are higher mostly because we're difficult to collect.
At least that's what they say.
Well.
I probably, these are far apart, they're not, you know, densely.
We're, we are pretty unique.
Large green bins.
Yeah.
And what?
Large amount of green bins and.
But, but I agree with what the council member Whitmer is saying, I mean, there's a lot of SBWMA overhead now that's getting attributed that wasn't back when I was involved in it, it's grown a lot, the organization is much larger now.
Yeah.
So if, if our goal is to get the efficiencies of a pooling arrangement without subsidizing anybody else, what's, what's the best way to achieve that?
Great. Well, I think the, 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 the best thing for us is to stay in the agency, but we would like to, I'd like to give it an, you know, the à la carte. We need to.
Yeah.
Push forward for the à la carte so that we are not paying for things that we don't want.
We don't need.
And we've tried to do that, Georgia and I tried to do that, we issued a letter, uh, earlier this year to try and get out of certain things, um, and, and Bill was associated with it. And, uh, you know, there was a lot of flailing around, you know, on the part of, of Kevin McCarthy as to, you know, why we couldn't do that.
Right.
I think a lot of it boiled down to the fact that, and what he specifically told me is they didn't wanna set up separate accounting systems for each of the jurisdictions. And so they ended up moving things from one location to another location, one balance sheet to another balance sheet to try and cover it up and while we may have prevailed with, with, uh, you know, winning the battle, to exempt ourselves from some of these things, the savings wouldn't have been worth the cost because we would have been paying for Bill's time as well as we would have been paying for the SBWMA to fight against us because we're part of the JPA.
I think, uh, too, I'm sorry, but one of the other things that we noticed over the duration of time is the other jurisdictions will say, oh, why don't we get that in ten different languages per se, when they don't even cover their city stuff in two different languages? But yet, since everybody else is paying the bill and we are, you know, one of those jurisdictions that haven't demanded or changed anything, but everybody else has a tendency of asking for a lot more than they normally would, but when you're spreading it across and everybody's getting a, a portion of it, then.
Right, I, my thought is, you know, we have a chance every decade to look at this. And, and if, if our goal is to pay our fair share, but no more than our fair share, this is the time to get there, right?
Yeah, it's not that we have a chance every ten years to do that, there's two, two agreements, so to speak. We, we, if Recology's providing a service via our franchise agreement and that service is, is not applicable to Atherton, we have the ability to opt out of it. We have that now. But if the SBWMA is providing a overhead cost or a regional public outreach program in ten different languages and is part of SBWMA budget, we do not have the ability to opt out.
Excellent, now we got the ability to get out of the entire program, which is.
Out of the SBWMA entirely.
Right, which means that we have a once every ten-year opportunity to, we have a point of leverage that we don't normally have, correct?
Right.
Well, we could opt out of the JPA, SBWMA, I assume, eh?
But I think what Mike's saying is that this is the time to clean up some of our language because the contract is up. And so some of the things that we want to clean up, this is the opportunity.
Yes, thank you.
So, I think this, this, our portion of the overhead payment is similar to the other JPA that we're involved with, that we have a hard time getting a handle on how much we are actually, uh, subsidizing or, or paying into that.
Right.
We can't carve out that, we can't get the accounting of exactly how much we're paying.
And through the, um, there's one other thing that's kind of a twist, is we're actually making the numbers look good, so as far as getting the four fifths vote, they don't really wanna lose us, our numbers are the highest in the county, so, and that side, you know, voting us out would probably, they wanna keep us in and.
Well, that's what I would think would be a.
That, that's our point of, some point of view.
That's, that's why I brought it to you, yeah, so, okay.
So we wouldn't wanna, I, I wouldn't wanna throw away one point seven million dollars.
Right, that's, that's a big, that's a big issue too. And then the educational requirements that would, uh, we would have to, uh, comply with the SB three forty-one, how big of a deal is that? How, you know, costly is it and how much, uh, is it, you know, to, for us to manage and then we don't.
Uh, well, the SBWMA spends on their own about two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on outreach and education, so they run the tours.
Awesome.
Then on top of that, Recology has a group of, uh, eight employees plus a supervisor, so let's say it's a cost of about one million to one point one million dollars, uh, for doing commercial outreach that works in conjunction with the SBWMA. So overall, there's a million and a half dollars, but some, a lot of it is focused on commercial.
Got it, okay. Any other, shall we continue this, because, uh, we've been on this a little while.
Yeah. Okay, um, if we do our own RFP, uh, first off, it's not gonna impact our JPA participation. And in fact, if we were to come up with a different hauler or have a contract with a different hauler other than what SBWMA is or have a contract different than the SBWMA for our, our hauler, uh, we still would be part of the JPA and so we still own part of the facility up there, so they would still be processing our, our refuge and reprocessing it and getting it to the dumps and things like that. So we would have that portion of the cost still in our cost, but we would have to do our own rate setting. So the main thing here is, is that, uh, you know, we'd have our own contract management responsibility for the hauler, that, that would be about it. Uh, if we're gonna do something though, um, we'd need to just think about what it is that we wanna do and, and get ready because getting people to bid on, on the franchise agreement is, um, would take them some time to write a proposal for us to evaluate it and then get into final negotiations, so time is of the essence over the next year, okay?
Okay.
Uh, so the recommendation is move forward with this process. Uh, opt for, you know, get our opt-out rates, is, rights that we've talked about, um, and we need to decide what type of services that we really wanna have added to our scope and, and on as we see how things are going. You know, George can bring that back as a staff report and we can maybe bring that forward. Um, if we're going to do our own RFP, which would be good, I think we should at least test the waters. Uh, we need to understand what we wanna have as compulsory services versus optional. Um, we need to decide if we wanna stay in the hazardous household waste contract and, uh, just make sure that we're not paying double.
Okay.
And so I think that that was it.
That was it, yeah, okay.
I think that was it, okay. So any other questions?
Uh, so, uh, attached to the, the packet is, um, our ordinance, that's the existing ordinance?
That's the one I think we just most recently.
Yeah, in October, there's some, there's some corrections and things that need to be made in it if this is actually the ordinance. But maybe it's not because it's XXX, maybe it was a draft. Um, and these are our rates that we're currently paying, that's on page twenty-one of this ordinance, correct?
Yeah, and remember what we ended up doing is we put in the, uh, every address has to pay twenty-five dollars and then we went ahead and then we changed the numbers, right?
Right, you know, monthly? Right, okay. So, um, do any members of the council have any additional comments or questions about this before I open it up to the public for making any, uh, comments?
So just to be clear, so the, the rates that are identified as the new rates for black garbage containers are approximately twice what anyone else in the district is paying?
Yeah, yeah, our rates, if you look at our composite rates, um, I forget, are, we're number one, um, and, uh, Hillsborough is number two and then there's like.
But Hillsborough, is Hillsborough in the S?
Yes.
Oh, I missed that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so are there any members of the public who'd like to make any comments about this? Jack?
Uh, several comments.
Yes.
I'm thinking back to the last time the contract was renewed and it changed from Allied Waste to Recology. And Recology had public meetings, they've all attended, they undeveloped the original contract. But it seems to me that we ended up with less than we were expecting and it cost more. And one of the things that was a big change is Allied Waste had one truck come by with two dr- with two people in it. Now we have three trucks coming by with one person each. And I don't know what the trade-offs there, but it seems to me that that's, that's a cost increase. And more pollution, more wear and tear on roads and things of that sort that should be, uh, considered and evaluated. Uh, another thing is my own opinion, on the, on the small black carts. Those carts are great for a midget hauling in and out, but you end up walking in a stoop both ways and they, they're designed so that the inside is made real small so you can't get much energy. So I would think that we ought to get a different black cart. Maybe with an extended handle or something like that so that we don't ruin our backs taking it in and out.
Thank you, um, just to maybe respond just briefly, I think that the carts were designed for the, uh, automatic grabber to then go like that?
Yeah, but.
And, but, but you're right.
But the thirty-two, the, you probably have the twenty-gallon cart, the twenty, there are, there are, uh, alternatives and maybe Gino can help you out that, um, they have a thirty-two gallon with a twenty-gallon insert, that the trash comes in and out easier and it's a taller cart and maybe that should be switched out for, for Jack.
Yeah, good.
So, uh, Jack can, if you talk to Gino, who's from Recology, he can.
Jack, if you just give me your address, we'll get that swapped out for a much easier cart.
Okay.
I echo those irritating comments, Jack. I, I can't, every half the time, my trash is still in there because it gets stuck because, I'm sorry, those are the worst cans. And they were the worst cans when we started this, so lucky I was on the board then.
Right.
So I'm with him.
Exactly, thank you.
Happy to just walk it out.
Anyone else? Yes, Jim.
It's like to make a con at the council, if you have not gone over and seen the recycling center, do it, I mean, the tour is unbelievable. How they do this, it's fantastic.
Okay, alright.
And they take a lot of kids through there, so they do, we're talking about the education thing, so my wife and I have done it a couple times with some other people. And you see school kids going through there and, and they get it.
Okay.
And, and it's really very well done.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice report, uh, Councilmember Whitmer, thank you very much for all your hard work on this. Uh, so we are receiving and reviewing the report and we're supposed to, uh, provide direction to staff at this time?
Yeah, we, uh, we need direction back, feedback basically. Do you wanna stay with the JPA process, press for the opt-out à la carte options? If we can't get those achieved, report back to the council with what the status of that is and then we can make other decisions with respect to doing our own RFP process and moving that forward. And then, kind of feedback on the A H W program, whether you'd like to continue that in December or not.
Uh-huh, okay.
Are, are we paying separately for that program?
The household waste.
Well, we've taken it out of the surplus, so we are paying for it, but, uh, but no one saw the rate increase because we use the surplus to.
Surplus to. We were testing it to see how.
So it was a free add-on based on our.
My personal, uh, opinion is that I don't think that, uh, so, a question. Uh, if more people participated in it, would that cost per pickup go down? I don't think that the residents really understand about the household waste, hazardous, hazardous waste. I didn't, I just cleaned out my gar- my garage and I literally have sitting on one of my, uh, patios with a big blue tarp all those paint cans in my house, and we've gotta get rid of that, Elizabeth. And so, so if we, I, I think that if we could market it a little bit, at least, uh, but it, we're doing it through the end of this year, anyway, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're into the end of this year.
So let's, maybe we don't have to make a decision until later on now.
I mean, obviously, it's something that we wanna do better, that's one of the reasons when Bill and I first brought this around.
Yeah.
It, it really was a test, we figured it'd be perfect for the type of residents we have.
Exactly.
And considering the proximity of Tower Road, which is a pain in the.
Yes.
Tail to get to for us and most of our people are just not gonna do it. And they probably would throw it in the trash thinking, oh, I'm not going to Tower Road.
Right.
So there was another reason behind it, so if we can get our numbers, you know, to where, you know, we double those numbers at least.
Then it's more cost effective.
Then it, then it makes more sense, but you're right, getting that education component somehow and some way, you know, with the town's participation and trying to push it. Cause I know people that once they figure it out, it's great and, you know, Bill's done a real good job.
Okay. And it's unlimited, you can call them at any time, is it?
Yeah, yeah, and they'll, they'll send you something, you fill out a form, they send you some stuff to put your stuff, your, your hazardous waste in. And unlike every other jurisdiction, we're allowed to put ours out at the counter. They wanna, they, everybody else, they have to go to the, you know, they're out at the curb, everybody else, they pick it up at your doorstep. And I, you know, there was a discussion that we weren't gonna give them our gate keys.
Okay, so Gino, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, um, all the jurisdictions have the ability to have a billing comment on the residential bills and commercial bills. And actually, the town of Atherton has taken advantage for different events that you've had, that might be an avenue to, um, advertise, if you will, or let your residents know about the household hazardous waste program.
Okay. Okay.
You can mention it, you can give the direct line. Again, it's a separate company and a separate service, but you can put that up with bills.
Okay.
Obviously see it and be aware of it when you get your residential bill.
Yeah, Gino writes.
Most, and, and, but, but most residents only get their bills once a quarter.
A quarter, that's right.
Correct. So that can work, but I think that if we did it more with our, um, social media tools, yeah. Yes.
I was going to say, it, remember that it sounds like other people have not managed to, to save a lot of money in this process. They all seem to be averaging about a hundred dollars per call.
Yeah, okay.
So I wouldn't expect this to be down to the twenty dollar per call.
Okay.
But my, my other question would be, what other options would we possibly have? Telling residents they got to drive it up to, to Tower Road? Is there any other quarterly or semi-yearly somebody would come by on a fixed date to pick them up?
Hazardous materials?
Yeah, would that be a much more efficient thing?
That would be, that, that would be for me, if we would have, like, we're having the shred event and the compost event.
Exactly, exactly.
That we would have the county come down and say, we're going to collect your stuff here. And then, you know, every other month or something like that, or once every three months, uh, and pick this stuff up. But, but, uh, I think that, you know, if Carrie's right, that how many people are going to bring wet paint?
Down here.
In their cars and drive.
See, that's, that's the problem. And then they have to plan it and, you know, load it and stuff. Okay, let's just.
Is the insurance about issue two?
Three.
And I, and I think we even asked the county, uh, last year if that was something that they would consider and they said no.
They didn't want to do it, but we're going to continue to press on.
Yeah, I think we should find an alternative to having people driving in their cars. I think what we have now, even a hundred and twenty-five dollars to pick up is probably better than that, but it seems ridiculous that a hundred and twenty-five dollars to pick up. They do pick up batteries when you put them out.
Yes, you put those on your blue bikes.
They have to go grab them, you put them out. Uh, I mean, I could imagine that these trucks could have a little compartment on them. They're, they're not going to get forty paint cans, most people won't have forty paint cans. But, uh, you know, they could have something that they could pick up. I mean, I can imagine that that could be done, just like they pick up batteries.
Maybe you could take that, okay. Any other comments? I think that, uh, the direction that we may want to give, uh, is in line with your recommendations, Councilmember Whitmer. Uh, unless anyone has anything different. Okay?
Thanks.
Moving on to item number two, which is, uh, to authorize a movie and community survey for Earth Day event. Uh, Lisa, you want to tee this up for us?
Sure, the city council approved five thousand dollars for an Earth Day event and the environmental programs committee is working hard to plan that. And they actually met yesterday, um, to start working on the event and, um, got some ad hoc committees together to start planning it. Uh, they've targeted May fifteenth, which is a Sunday for the, for the event. It was just too soon to get it on Earth Day.
Yeah.
And then we looked at the availability of, um, the park facilities and that seemed like a good day where we had some good availability. Um, so as part of the Earth Day event, they would like to have a movie with a possible, um, panel discussion after it. And there's, um, they would also like to send out a survey to kind of get a little bit of interest and also gauge, um, some community interest. So, um, the chair of the committee has, um, suggested several different movies, which are included in your packet. You also have a summary of those. And then the chair also drafted the survey that's included in your packet. So I'd be happy to take any of your comments.
Great, thank you. So, does any member of the council have a comment, clarifying comment that we want to talk about? I can open it up for public comment, or do you want to make a comment on this?
Yeah, I just have one query on the survey.
Yes.
Is the survey going to be only available at the Earth Day or is it going to be broadcast throughout the community?
So, yeah, the thought was to send out ahead of the Earth Day event to gauge community interest, to help then plan the Earth Day event. So what is the community interested in learning more about water conservation, energy? And then we can kind of plan the event accordingly.
Yeah, cause my concern was that the survey should be broadly supposed to target when you're obscured results.
Exactly.
Survey is quite interesting, parts are somewhat intrusive, at least you have the option to pump down.
Okay, maybe we should take that up first. You want to, you want to talk about the survey first? And, and then we'll talk about the. The movie, uh, but the survey's going to be hard. Ah, okay, so, okay, let's go around the table. And, uh, so just a, a little bit of information, the chair and the committee, uh, asked that if the council could give two or maybe three approved movies, uh, to make sure that if one, the, the first one is not, uh, available, that, you know, they have a little bit of, uh, choice to try to, you know, secure one, okay? So you want to, who wants to go first?
Um, I, I would like to make a comment, believe it to, if we're going to pick three, then we need more movies.
I agree with that.
Hmm, okay.
I can go with three now.
I, I, I can go with three now.
Well, I can tell you what I thought.
Okay.
I gave you what I thought. I thought, I thought that this Pandora's Promise was provocative, but very interesting. I, I'd like to see it, I didn't think any of the others were.
Okay, all right, so you only have one to choose from?
Correct.
Okay, so, uh, Councilmember Whitmer.
I thought Pandora's Promise, uh, was a, was a good movie. Uh, I thought Tapped was good and even though it's a little dated, it is timely, especially given the water prices. I thought that was good. Um, I was okay with Merchants of Doubt, uh, and Racing Extinction. I thought that was okay, I wasn't sure that they were really applicable to us, but, uh, okay. Uh, D, F, and G didn't make the cut with me.
Okay.
And I watched all the trailers.
Yeah, okay, all right. So, um. Well, I, and if anyone hasn't seen the trailers, we can tee it up right here, we've got it all online. We can, we can spend a couple of minutes for each one if you want to do that. Um, how about you, Vice Mayor?
Um, I, I think the concept of a movie is, you know, a, a good one, I think we talked last.
Which one?
A movie, A movie.
Oh, the concept of a movie.
A movie, I said, is a good one. I think, um, it's important to me that we have some kind of disclaimer out there that this is not the city council taking a position or the town of Atherton taking a position on this stuff.
Yes.
Cause these are often pretty close to, I mean, they're pieces of advocacy. Um, and I want to be sure if we're going to put those out there that we are clear that that's not the town advocating these positions. Having said that, I, you know, Pandora's Promise I'm actually familiar with and, and that was the one that was raised before and I'm fine with that. Many of the others I did have issues with, including, um, Merchants of Doubt, what I, what I worry about is the con- uh, that can be perceived as an effort to shut down people who disagree. Um, and just generally, I'm not sure that's a great public position to be in.
Okay. Would you have a second paper?
Well, I, you know, um, Tapped is something that, I'm going off the, these descriptions, I didn't see.
You didn't see the movie? The tr- oh, we should, we should saw the tr- we should show the trailer.
Yeah, you should have tapped, tapped was good.
Um, and then my other, uh, this question before I come, it's on Cowspiracy, which is a great name, by the way, is, um, there's an I believe in the middle of that, it feels like we're reading a film review. What exactly is, where did this come from?
Well, it probably was, I mean, I think, and, but, well, you know, you asked the chair to, and I asked her this yesterday, didn't I, Lisa? I said, so, did you, where did you get this description? She says, well, you know, I kind of pulled it from, you know, their own descriptions, you know, and said something, you know, it kind of flew, flew it together. She plagiarized, but, you know, from certain points. I mean, that was a lot of work to do that. I mean, her, she could have just given you the names and then you had to go and do your own, uh, research. But, um, I would recommend that you take a minute of time and take a look at a couple of these. I'll give you my, my selections. I think that, uh, and actually, um, I, I gave this to several other people. And I said, look at these, this list and read these and tell me, you know, what you think about, you know, this and. And the three out of the three people that I showed to all chose Pandora's Promise as number one. They thought that for Atherton, uh, the, uh, people would think that it's provocative, they wouldn't. And I said, do you feel like we're endorsing this? Oh, no, I mean, you're not, you know, this is just something to talk about. And so that, and then the water thing was something that I felt, like, Councilmember Whitmer, it seemed a little dated because I think it was done in two thousand, but it's so compelling. And here we are, every one of us has a bottle of water in front of us and, um, almost, except he had a can. But, you know, and, and the thing is, is that, uh, there are, the amount of petrol, um, uh, petroleum products that goes into making these, and you can literally taste the difference between, uh, manufacturers of bottled water because of how the bottle is made. So I think that's a good one. And then I think the racing extinction, but, um, you know, I'd have to re-watch that if that would be a, a third one. Um, so, does anybody want to watch, um, the Tapped?
I already watched it, but, uh, they had.
Sure, but how, how long is it?
It's not that long. It sounds like everyone agrees with Pandora's Promise, why is it that we need more than one?
She wanted to make sure she could get it.
They can't get the movie?
That, we wanted, she wanted to confirm that she could get the movie.
Or is it to get somebody who would speak to the movie?
No, she said she was worried about getting the movie.
The rights to show it?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
I don't think everyone agrees, but.
So would you, would you like to make a statement, uh, Councilmember Reese?
Everyone didn't speak.
Well, he did, he made, he was the first one to speak.
He said none of the above.
He did, and so I just assumed none of the above.
I'll go with that answer.
Well, okay, but you were the first one to speak.
I didn't say anything.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did.
He said he didn't like any of them.
Well, you said there should be more options if you're going to select more movies.
There is a movie, there is a movie on our trash processing.
That was my point.
Okay, now you can say, uh, no, no, don't let me, uh, not give you the opportunity.
I'm so green right now that.
Green with it.
I'm chosen. Um, no, I, I, I will just say that, and I've said it before, I, I think that the, the focus to try to help Atherton with some of the programs that we have, I think that some of, most of these don't really fly at our level to try to give us some influence on how we can do better as, as a community. I think that these are great, they're, they fly way up there, go to Sacramento and go to Washington. But here for Atherton, how can we utilize this process and spend Atherton tax dollars on a movie to try to influence our people to do better and how we can get our programs? And the only thing that I found in the movies that I could see a bearing influence was Tapped, just merely because of the fact that it had to do with recycling and product. Um, we opted out of, we opted out of, the whole county opted out of even buying recyclable, you know, nuclear energy. So I think that there's, well, if we opted out there, then why are we selecting a movie related to nuclear energy? Um, again, so my whole thing was is that I just don't think that there was enough to give us assistance in some of our programs or how we think, um, here. But I'm not the one that was watching all the trailers. Um, nor, like I said, if I would have had other options, I would look, I read every little detail. I went on the internet, did all those things, didn't watch the trailers.
You should have watched the trailers.
My, uh, little DVD.
Your computer?
Yeah. It's broken. So, that's just my point.
This is how many minutes?
I like that song.
It's five minutes. It's five minutes.
All right, go ahead.
Shall we do it?
You put it on the big screen.
Most of the public does not know that there are plastic materials being made in federal campaigns. People think when they're drinking bottled water that they're in public. They're not teaching them, maybe there's something in the plastic. We found that one person at the FDA was responsible for overseeing all of the regulations of bottled water in the country. Are you that one person?
I do some, spend some of my time on bottled water, but I have other responsibilities as well.
We don't consider tap water to be an enemy, we don't.
People typically perceive a difference in.
I can tell the difference in many bottled waters, just as I can tell the difference between tap water and, and other beverages.
You can't, absolutely. You know, you're, you're under oath, but you're.
Absolutely.
I say that with a little tiny agenda.
Well, first of all, we should realize that a lot of the bottled water is tap water.
Yeah, what do you mean? I, I thought that they came from like the mountains and the streams and the springs of Maine.
That's what they would have, spilling.
That's good music, you're right.
Bottled water is the greatest advertising and marketing trick of all time.
There are all sorts of ecological problems. We use approximately eighteen million barrels of oil to transport water and it's growing every year.
It's as if we're a bulimic society, we've been binging on petroleum, we've been packaging everything in plastic and now we're running out of resources.
In a time where we're looking to climate change, why are we shipping water around the world?
Yeah, we thought it would run out of water. Now it's twenty dollars a barrel.
If you eliminate the square of bottled water, you'll be eliminating one of the biggest problems facing our environment. There's plastic everywhere in the ocean. There's nine football fields in Arizona, it's big as Texas.
This is the biggest.
Tons of plastic out there, all of which are included, animals consuming it of the food chain, the food that you and I eat. We want to drink the purest water that we can get. Now, why would you put that water into a substance which has the potential to leach chemicals into that water?
Yeah, also got me now. Programs that we tested contained everything from radioactive materials to arsenic and industrial solvents, chemicals that leach out of the plastic itself. You're talking about virtually no testing. And people had just assumed that what we're getting is safe.
Something causes a lot of these neighbors out here to be sick.
When people buy bottled water, they are contributing to the toxic exposures that people here are suffering.
We don't have a chance. We do not have a possible chance. This phenolane may be one of the most potent toxic chemicals of man. We don't need the product.
We don't have a chance.
I'm not sure about those.
This phenolane is an industrial chemical that's here in a big five gallon jug. My concern is that the FDA doesn't want us to ask about the EPA because of the current investigation. Can you talk about it now?
If I know you were going to talk about it.
Hang on, there's only a minute left.
What's happening here in Congress is really a microcosm of what's happening around here.
Nestle, in, in the ten years that they have been operating this community, has torn the Fabians community.
It's all about the control and ownership of water. It is not something where you can just sit back and hope that your elected representatives do all the right things.
When we drink bottled water, we're telling our leaders that we don't care about the system.
Well, this government's not doing it, this government is so for sale. So they're extremely auctioned off, public's rights to water. Water is invasive to human life.
Everybody drinks water every day.
It's necessary for the survival of life.
We don't have any bottled water.
The whole place is come up, when you start to find the necessities of life in such a way as to make it more difficult for people to gain access to those necessities, you have the basis for a serious political struggle. We are the children of revolution and war soldiers and we are not going to give this up without fighting.
Well. All right, so, I mean, and then in light of the Flint, Michigan deal? Oh, my gosh, Tapped, so, okay, so that's, that's that one. Um, and then. Did anybody do that this changes everything?
I think we can get Pandora's.
Can we get two?
Two, we're going to show two?
No, we have to give Valerie.
Why? I, I, I'll move that we, uh, approve her getting Pandora's Promise that's available. We need to do two. We have, wait, that's ten dollars or five dollars. Available.
Okay, so, um, I, I have a motion?
No motion, just some feedback.
Yeah, I, 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 I just use that for.
I like, I like the, I like the as well.
I like Pandora's and I like the Tapped.
Yeah.
So I would like to see us, um, you know, give her those two options.
I'm in agreement with that.
No, fine with that.
Okay, good. All right, let's talk about the, uh. Okay, good. All right, let's talk about the survey, okay? I also gave the ser-, did anybody, uh, test the survey on anybody? I tested it on two people and, uh, I had two areas that I had pulled out. Said, well, I don't know, I think we should leave that in. So, uh, the number two, cause I thought that was kind of, uh, you know, invasive or asking too much information. I said, no, it'd be kinda good to know. So, I, um, I would like to hear what everybody else has to say.
Um, I thought that questions five and six were pertinent to what we were asked to approve collecting information. Excuse me, with what people might wanna get information on and vendors and things like that.
Mm-hmm.
I thought that seven and eight were policy decisions. And I thought a lot of the demographic information, um, was unnecessary and in some cases, I wondered why we needed that information and thought that maybe if you answered, for example, I don't know much about science, that then if you didn't answer something, your answer, you didn't answer something the evaluator thought maybe you should or it pushed forward the ideas that whoever was evaluating this, they would discount it and say, well, it's because you're an anti-science person, you're not an expert, you're not well-educated, you have modest income, you're too old and you're mid-career up to seventy and that you don't live here but half-time and you live east of El Camino. I mean, I, I just didn't think that some of that stuff. I thought it was just a little too much. That was my two cents. And I, and my professional level is trade. I, I just thought a lot of extra demographic information was unnecessary and, and you know.
So what do you think? Go ahead.
I just had a threshold question. We, we, there's a sentence in here that says confidentiality of response will be protected. Okay, that's my question. What's the answer to that question? Is that? Okay, wait, that would affect, you know, my thought about what some of these questions. Uh, obviously, we shouldn't say we'll protect it if we can't protect it.
If they put their email address on there, we'll say it's optional, it, it's public property. So it will be disclosed if anybody asks. But there's no place on here, at least I didn't see a place, that asks for their name.
Or your email.
But like, my wife's emails are name at gmail dot com.
So that's what most people.
Right, and so if you don't put your email, which is optional.
Or we could take that off also.
Right. So, how is this going to, it's a survey monkey?
Could be.
And it would be sent via email?
It could be mailed, it could be a survey monkey, it could be using Open Town Hall, it could be just.
Open Town Hall?
Trumping it up.
Or have it on our website might be.
That'd be, no, Open Town, but if you send it to them, you have their email by definition.
If you send it electronically via the electronic newsletter, it only goes to whoever sits it on.
Yeah, lists are. Right, but yes, yes, they won't be confidential because that's what you know who they are.
Because they have to respond, right.
Open Town Hall, they can, you know, leave their name undisclosed on there and it's just their IP address.
The amount of people that use Open Town Hall is smaller than.
Yeah.
Just understand, understand that a survey that doesn't have a name or an email address can be answered by the same person twenty-five or fifty or a thousand times.
True.
Yeah, surveys are problematic that way.
Survey, yeah, surveys can be, I mean, basically, take it for what it's worth.
Mm-hmm, and then, so that's why, like a survey monkey, you know, vehicle, you have some control.
Right, well, it's tied to your IP address.
But my overarching question is the more, if, if we're asking for confidentiality, if we're not able to treat it confidentially, we should ask for less specific information. I, I don't think you'll wanna see their voting records and, you know, the, the stuff like that in here, it just, I wouldn't like to see it in a public place.
Yeah.
Or any, I'm not sure if this is an appropriate vehicle to gather that. I think what they're trying to gather, it seems at the heart of it, is what, uh, what Bill described, I think, which is, was it five and six? Is that really where they're trying to grab?
Theoretically, they could do five and six via survey monkey, get that in and go with information in preparation for the event. And then at the event, have something that folks could pick up, sign in and return to some of the other data if they're registered.
I also would love to see somebody's gonna check their anti-science and find out. And I'm not sure that, that the way we're identifying sex in this is the way the law would do it now.
There's a few facts.
Yeah, I know, I said, yeah.
Sartre.
Yeah.
What?
Some of the word choices are, are either dated or problematic or characterizing the ages.
Well, why don't we, why don't we go through and delete the things or, instead of deleting, let's focus on the positive, okay? Let's, you know, say the things that we would like to include in a survey. And, and, and if we could include it in a survey that could be sent out through our email serve so that they can come, uh, send it back. I, I would like to have more of a direct email blast rather than have people go to the website and do it.
Well, with a direct email blast, it's still a link back to some other location. It could be a link to survey monkey or it could be a link to Open Town Hall. Personally, I have to drive them to our website via Open Town Hall, but we can drive them to survey monkey as well.
So, the point, the point is when you open the survey, so if you send an email, when they open the survey, they're gonna open it, but they're gonna go to a website.
Oh, I see.
The link will take you to a website and I agree with what George said.
Okay.
If it's indifferent to us, I'd rather bring them to our website
Right, okay.
than to survey monkey because they may get some other data that would be useful.
Good, okay, all right, so.
We, let me just give one fact. We, when, when we were considering accepting the park in nineteen sixty-one, I think it was, uh, there was a survey sent out to every Atherton resident to ask them what kind of activities they wanted to see in the park. Over fifty percent of the Atherton residents responded to that survey. So, you can get quite a good response. I'm not saying you're gonna get it to this, but I'm just saying it has happened.
It was a different time and place also.
Discovery that I made.
Yeah, but now everybody wants to really just do it online.
I understand that.
But, but I think the, the bottom line is, what was the need? The need for the survey was, was so that we could tailor Earth Day, that we would get the maximum number of people out and they would get the maximum out of it. So what we need to.
Elizabeth can probably speak to this since she's the only one here that has been at those meetings, right?
You mean the EPC meetings?
Yeah.
No, no, I mean, and.
This is where it was discussed, but, but I think that they also wanted to think of some programmatic things that they could do beyond Earth Day and that's the purpose of first question seven and eight.
Well, it's really focused for the Earth Day, you know, programs and stuff because that's the focus of, of the Environmental Programs Committee right now, is to put on this Earth Day event. And then going forward, yeah, um, other programs and the survey would follow up from the Earth Day event also.
Seven, eight, I don't go beyond Earth Day.
Yeah.
Ask people some, I think, you know, I mean, I changed some words and maybe there's a couple of the line items that aren't relevant. But in general, they're kind of interesting questions about what people are interested in around.
So can we go down the list here just, just for efficiency because we're never gonna finish and I'm worried about the time? Um, item number one, level of overall environmental concern. Do you think that that is a question that should be asked? Just to gauge how, I mean, maybe we have residents who say, I'm not concerned about it. I mean, how many do we want to know?
I think, yeah, I think.
I thought it was French.
It's supposed to say none, right, the first word?
Non. Okay.
So that one's okay.
Does everybody feel that's okay?
Seems okay.
Yeah, but I think I would take off none and just say slight, moderate.
Yeah.
Because no one's gonna say.
How does that, how does that feel?
Or they may say non.
Okay, we love the French. Okay, number two, what about that?
I don't see that that's pertinent.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, but again, somebody.
Two cents.
What do you think?
If we're going towards deleting it, then fine with that, if that's where we're going.
Yeah.
I ask your question, it was too good of the internet I didn't hear.
Well, we're just talking about that right now.
I think they said no.
So far, it's no.
No.
None?
Or none.
No.
So, what about the level of knowledge of climate change and the risks we face?
Potentially.
But, I think that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's okay. Again, I wouldn't put, I wouldn't put none.
I wouldn't put none?
Yeah.
Well, there, there's some standard survey terminology in one, two, three, four, five or some little.
That's a good idea, actually, yes.
Yeah.
For, for answers to these, instead of creating, I'm an expert in the area kind of responses.
Yeah.
Does that, if, if somebody checks, I'm an expert in the area, does that mean their survey carries more weight than some others?
That's what I would say.
And I would say that some people may have no knowledge of climate change.
Hmm.
So.
For those sorts of questions, we could create those sorts of.
Yeah.
So it's, it's interesting to me that we're letting you say what issues you're interested in. We give a list of ten or twelve issues more than fifteen issues, one of which is climate change.
Where, where are you?
Five.
Oh, we haven't gone.
No, but my point is, in the question number two, we're already focused specifically on climate change is the only issue.
Three.
Three, whatever, three and a half, we're talking about only one issue. And then later we talk about, here's fifteen issues, do you care about them?
If you're a.
Yeah, I don't think that's the way surveys are typically done.
If you're really looking, if you're really looking for standard survey methodology, it would ask, it would ask a question that says, do you believe in climate change? Because I know a number of people that don't, a number of scientists that say they don't. So, you're, you're cutting out.
Do you believe? I mean, you're saying that as a survey expert?
Actually, I apologize, I did surveys as a, as a scientist.
Okay, well, um, okay.
It just says, my knowledge of climate change. Well, my knowledge of extraterrestrial beings.
Okay, is it, is this, is this somehow illegal to ask it this way?
You can ask it any way you want. I'm just asking what you're trying to get from it so we don't get somebody that's.
Well, if you've changed it from climate change to, what, what's your level of knowledge about environmental?
Issues.
Issues.
Sure.
I think that would be, and, yeah.
Yeah.
Nobody doesn't assume anything.
But, okay, so you've got environmental concern and then you've got knowledge, right? So number one would be the environmental, level of overall environmental concern, slight, moderate, very concerned. Then, uh, level of knowledge of environmental issues. Okay, can we just?
Sure.
Instead of saying my level, just level of knowledge of environmental issues.
And you wanna leave nine on that one?
And, uh.
Or is.
And not say, and the risks.
George standardized the responses.
Well, not necessarily one to give a five, but there's, there's standard, sort of, yeah, responses.
And, and so what are we doing?
Standardizing the types of responses.
So maybe, maybe we should say slight, moderate, very concerned or, uh, very familiar?
Or we could do, you know, one, two, two for five, but say one is little or zero and five is, you know, greatest.
Oh, I see, take, take, okay, so, uh, and it's usually, we're just gonna keep to a three choice?
Three's kinda hard, but I would.
How about, you're gonna do five?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna modify it to make it a five-choice, um, uh, model.
And what was it, the wording, can you level of, level of knowledge of environmental?
We're going, uh, similar to number one, level of knowledge of environmental issues. Okay.
And the risks we face from them, is that still in there?
I'm not sure.
It has to.
Environmental issues.
What's wrong with it?
Well, then they're gonna say, well.
And.
I think it's okay.
And the risks we face.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the survey's pretty, are you doing a whole survey? Is that what we're doing today?
It's coming from the town, from the Environmental Programs Committee from the town. And then number four, the scientific underpinning for our understandings regarding climate change are at a level of, I'm not sure.
Of, of deleting.
So you're saying, could this be worded, reworded to say that, um, you believe that there are scientific, um, uh.
Well, I don't see that as pertinent, really. You know, because then later on, we're gonna say, what do you want them to know more about, so.
Okay, all right, move on then. Okay.
So, until eight, four?
Or we want? Is that, everybody happy with that?
Yep.
Okay, uh, number five, environmental issues, uh, that I'm concerned about.
Those are all good. We can probably come up with more.
Do you wanna keep in general or just about include? Okay. Okay, good, okay. And number six, environmental issues that I think would, could be helpful for the town, uh, about, okay. So, do you, you wanna, uh, make it the town of Atherton, the town, capital T or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought that the second bullet point, reducing wasted energy, it's not really a characterization I'm familiar with. I actually think we should have one of these little boxes that is reducing waste.
Yeah.
Seems how we just spent an hour talking about that subject.
And wasted energy, so, okay, reducing waste, let's make that that.
Yeah, reducing waste.
I would add in this, I mean, the, the growing thing that many of us know are the, is this new battery systems that you can install on your homes and things like that. And people are asking about those.
That's good. Why don't we add battery systems?
Yeah, home battery systems.
Home batteries.
Home battery, home battery, home backup systems.
They're not called home backup systems.
What are they called?
They're called nuclear power plants that you put on your.
They're Tesla. Tesla batteries.
No, they're batteries, they're storage.
Is that the Bloom, is that the Bloom batteries?
It's energy storage.
It's not the Bloom batteries?
No, it's not Bloom. Bloom's not a battery.
Bloom's a proper term.
Bloom's a natural gas production.
Can we find that proper term and use it? Home battery systems, okay.
I think it's energy.
No, there's, there's.
Okay, anything else you wanna add?
You're asking, yeah.
Okay, so, let's look at number.
That's a, that's a brand new.
Tesla Powerwall.
That's a brand new.
Home battery that charges electricity.
Home battery.
Home battery.
I, I, yeah.
I wouldn't say the Tesla. We may have Tesla.
We shouldn't characterize it by Tesla.
But we may have Tesla as a, um, as a vendor.
Home battery, battery storage.
So we've gone more into that.
Home battery or energy storage.
This is gonna be good. You're, you're gonna love it.
It'll be in Texas, I'm sorry.
I think, I agree with you. I think people would be interested.
I have a lot of board meeting.
Well, okay, number seven, let's look at number seven. Atherton will be required, how about?
So I have a, I have a language change to the lead in. I would say California, California's mandate requires that Atherton reduce our total carbon emissions over time.
About towns or cities, residents, jurisdictions.
That's good, just get rid of all the numbers.
I suggest we'll get rid of that one and number eight, my comment.
That's what I was.
No, I understand, but I think that there is some value here and I think if we wordsmith it and make it more because we, we do have them, we do have this state mandate.
Are these, are these gonna be used to drive policy or are we talking to a target?
Yes.
Are we using it, so then I wanna go to a target audience that targets the other side? You're not getting an adequate balance. If you're going to acquire a group and you wanna talk about choir, you're gonna get choir answers. But you're going to an environmental group asking about policy decisions to drive policy.
No, but wait a minute.
It doesn't make sense.
But wait a minute, no, we're not driving the policy decisions.
But you're, but the questions, the questions that are in here, they're largely formed in a policy manner.
Well, the mandate, California state mandates are going to require that certainly, some of these things in here have got to be done. So, let's, I, I understand that there's a lot of things in here that nobody feels that we should put in a survey. But I think that there are things that can and should be.
Why don't we say, uh, to help reduce carbon emissions, would you like to learn about? And then we can have A, which is good, um, you know, D, which is a good one, how can I update my home?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, E, are there any home program, homeowner programs?
Educate residents, alert homeowners, it's educating homeowners to, to programs.
And, uh.
You could also leave it just concerning the.
I thought C or D.
Educate homeowners about how to convert natural gas appliances to electric. Educate homeowners about how to convert natural gas appliances to electric.
Yeah.
I'd take that out.
You, you could also, if, I mean, if, if this is being driven back to Open Town Hall, you could just say, just like Rick mentioned, California's mandate bars Atherton, uses its total carbon emissions over time. What areas do you think the town should focus, list three blank lines and help them couple it in?
Oh, that's a very good idea.
Right, okay.
I like that idea.
That's a very good idea, yeah, yeah, that's, okay, okay, I like that.
And you're not creating a.
Because then you're really getting, because I, number one, I thought that there were too many choices, and to have people kinda read through all of that, and, you know, it's just too much.
Yeah, how'd the train get back in here?
Eight.
Might as well put in an H, high-speed rail as well.
We're taking it all out, did you not, you know, see that, okay, so don't, you don't have to kinda.
Number eight.
Yeah, that's, sorry. Okay, sorry, not prologue.
You know. Right, right, drought is likely to become an increasing problem in California, which are the following actions do you think we should focus on in, now and in the next few years?
About what you, what you would like to see, yeah, okay.
Could go back to Georgia's.
You're gonna do this the same way?
We could do it the same way?
It's coming, similar.
Yeah.
Some of these areas aren't the town's.
Yeah.
Charity section or purview in California, but.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I, yeah, I, I reduced some of the language in C and D, it just seemed like way too much words.
Well, you know, we had, we had really focused on asking the EPC to educate, you know, in, educate, 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 and so I think that's where a lot of this, educate residents.
Well, yeah, I, I don't, I didn't have a problem with the, but in C, you could just take, take, after rainwater capture, you can take the rest of it out. You don't need all that stuff, and it's too much, people aren't gonna respond, and in D, after the near parks and long roads, you could take the rest of that out.
Well, those.
It's referring specifically to the channel, isn't it?
Yeah, that's, yeah, somebody's trying to.
It's referring very specifically to one thing, yeah.
Or she's forward, maybe just trying to forward a position that has been spoken about.
Yeah, I mean, if, if people wanna talk about repairing, or is, I, I don't have any problem in them saying that's something they're interested in.
As long as we don't just represent, if three people say yes, and nobody says no, that we say three hundred percent said yes.
Like, I don't wanna, I don't wanna lead them down a path.
I, I guess my thought would be, if, if we're going with George, with George suggesting for seven, which was basically blanks you fill in, why would we not do something similar for eight, just blanks to fill in?
Yeah.
It'd be a more consistent document.
But, but, it, it would, what, it's not just open blanks, there's also a drop-down menu people can look at, right?
That's not what I suggested for seven, no, just straight up blank.
Oh, uh, I'm okay with that. It's, but, but how's that different than nine?
Wait, wait a minute.
Correct.
Well, if it's just, if there's, if there's no drop-down menu, then you're not gonna help people out at all, it's gonna be all over the map, it's like just.
Yeah, because they won't be able to come up with, uh.
It's fill in the blank, then, then you're gonna get five percent of the response.
Yeah. Right, 'cause they don't know, uh, you know, how.
That's what would've happened with our priorities last year, that people used the drop-down.
Yeah, we kinda gave them some suggestions.
We did, but those were clearly policy suggestions from the council, not.
Mm-hmm, um.
These which may not be.
Well, okay, um.
I mean, we've, we've kind of asked some of this information in the responses to five and six.
Well, some of these things are actually in the climate action plan, okay, so ways to reduce home usage, water usage is one thing, okay?
Yeah.
I realize that one of the things also was a gray water system that we've had some discussion on, I don't think we've come to resolution, we haven't gotten there yet, so.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So, you said, some of these things we haven't made a decision on, you know, people wanna know about well water or rainwater capture systems, I think those are great things for them to do. I mean, they could've also been listed up there and, and some of the things in five and six, but if we list them here, then that's fine, I think, you know, I think there are certain things that maybe say, for example, maybe on your drop-down menu, it says, for example, and list just a couple of them, and then that may, maybe.
Stimulate their ideas.
As opposed to just giving them a blank piece of paper, which is nine.
Well, I think that's, yeah.
Well, on number seven, so if you're gonna add a drop-down, so, A would be, you know, California's mandate requires reduction of carbon emissions over time, what areas do you think the town should focus on? For example, reducing waste, uh, reducing home energy. Uh, educating.
Home programs.
Home programs. Uh, educating the community, um.
Caltrans stopping.
Bike and pedestrian, yeah, bike ped programs, I think, because we've already, I mean, we've, we've said that.
Bike ped programs, yeah. Right, um, bringing the train back, energy efficiency, appliances.
Um.
Yeah, well, we already do that, okay.
These are, these are just ideas to stimulate their, their thought process, okay, all right, so those all work for number seven?
Okay. Yeah.
What about number eight?
Well, uh, water usage surveys, uh, well water and rainwater recaptures.
Oh, changing, sprinklers, you know, smart sprinkler systems, so.
Smart sprinkler systems, changes, what was that first one?
Yeah. Uh, uh, rainwater systems.
Rainwater systems, rainwater collection systems, right.
Rainwater collection or capture.
Well water.
Well water usage, well water usage, education.
What about, uh, improving?
And, and, uh, what are these surveys?
In, yeah, improving, uh.
Can we also ask about gardens, or how did they phrase it earlier, about?
Programs. Or.
Programs available.
Programs available.
Yeah.
Native garden design, isn't that a?
Cellar or vegetation.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
I would've listed that.
Okay, so we can list those things, stimulate them, then get some blanks.
Okay.
But what we found when we did that the last time, for Open Town Hall, when we listed some things, is people tended to focus just on that list, and had some issues creating other things, but there will be blanks.
That's true, I think that's right.
So, I think that then, to have a broader list of maybe five or seven, uh, and just say, check the ones that resonate with you, that you feel are important. Check the top three that you feel is important.
Okay, is that?
Okay.
Yeah, because that's, I think that's kinda what we're wanting to find out, not just a whole list of, of, um, you know, random things, but what people are really, you know, what's on their mind, but they would, yeah, the top three areas.
Right. Like they have. Uh, the top three areas, yeah.
What type of three areas would help you?
Right. And if there's a, one, then there's one line for other, or something, but then you put one in and list that as their top.
Right. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Let's move back here.
And then, uh, how do people feel about the Atherton demographic characteristics?
Before we get to that one, sorry to do this too, but then they, when, when we spoke last time, I thought one of the goals was to try to find out if there are town residents who are particularly expert in, or had some, you know, knowledge of, um, an environmental issue, who could become a resource.
Yeah.
Somebody who's, for example, doing a, some kinda cool soul or something, or something.
You can rephrase number nine to do that.
Yeah, I think that's not, I think, one of the things about this town is that you have people who do pretty cool stuff, and if somebody wanted to volunteer, you know, a chair of a company that does something very cool, it'd be nice to know.
Yeah, that's first.
Sharing the resources or something.
Right.
Would you be willing to volunteer in, in your subject area of expertise or something?
Yeah, good.
Well, I don't know about asking if they might volunteer, I wouldn't do that, I think we could just ask if they have any special knowledge, then they don't have to volunteer, they don't want to.
Then they hold close to their chest and never share.
If they, if they don't have their name or email address, what could set an example to you?
Well, ask if, if, we could reach out to them.
I don't know, but some way to reach out to them, it seems would be nice.
Yeah, reach out to them.
Just say, you know, if you have any specific knowledge in this area.
If they respond on Open Town Hall.
If they respond on Open Town Hall, their, their email is not disclosed, we, I think we can get it via the backend, uh, but the frontend is not disclosed and not shown.
You know who they are.
So on the backend, though, if they responded with their information, we can, we can, we have access to that.
Well, or you could just say, if you have knowledge and you'd like to help the EPC, please contact.
Right, we've contacted.
It's kind of, I just, that's something like it, so if, if there's a guy who's founded a company that does home energy, battery, you know, why not?
Yeah, something cool.
That's better, because if we can, the way public records act requests work, somebody asks us, do you have this information, if you got it on the backend, you get to it, they don't get it.
Yeah.
So it's, I mean, if you wanna protect them, protect them, let them volunteer.
Okay.
And the number, by the way, Elizabeth, the number of these demographic questions, they could be viewed as supporting some form of discrimination, age, sex.
So, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about this, and so I think that, um, my personal feeling is that we don't need those kinda demographics, uh, in this particular survey.
I agree to leave that.
Okay. Okay.
And even though I am mid-career, I make sure.
Yeah, and then we won't say this, thank you very much for your time, or we'll say something like that, but not that.
We want to, the combination of spots, you protected.
All right.
Energy of our comments cannot be protected.
Okay, are we done now?
Yes.
Good, okay, moving on to, uh, so we have thirty minutes to go through this, uh, climate action plan, and, uh.
So you all have, you all got my email in advance that talked about, this is, this is a policy document, an overarching policy document, but it's not a doc, uh, and we're representatives of policy programs that eventually you may implement.
May. May.
And if you do implement them, we can reinforce and manage and all that sort of stuff, uh, so they do have that eventual lead to them, so as you think about them, think about them in that context. Uh, and we're looking for that overall overarching policy feedback, the GHG numbers for each one, those are all worked out, we're probably at above, beyond, uh, that fifteen percent by the time we're all done. But we're really looking for that policy feedback on the remaining items.
Okay, I just wanna reconfirm that what we put in here is not a mandate that we absolutely have to begin implementation tomorrow.
That's correct.
It's what would then come back, you know, we can, reach into this document, we can reach into this document at a later date and say, you know, this is what I think we should be working on now, how about that? And then we bring it back to council and we, you know, say, okay, this plan, we're gonna move forward on.
Yeah, and it's a document you can amend over time.
If, if I understand it, we get greenhouse gas credit for recommending certain things, there's certain greenhouse gas credits that are associated with those policy decisions of recommending something like, we recommend that people, uh, plant trees in a certain place that shapes the sign, there's greenhouse gas credit for that, right? And there's, and you aggregate up those greenhouse gas credits, and you come to a percentage of reduction from two thousand and five, and that gives us what that percentage is, and at some point, we talk about whether we wanna hit a target that pushes us beyond that specified limit. And we have the list of where others, both in California and this area, have selected their targets.
So if.
I have a comment, which is, I went through this whole plan, and there are, the, the, the thing that's missing from the list are the two most significant things about how you reduce greenhouse gas credits. The, where we have the greatest greenhouse gas input, it impact is in residential and transportation, right? Very heavily weighted in those two areas.
What page do you have in that?
Uh, that's, well, it's all over the place, there's so much repetition in this, but this is on two point two, called baseline emissions inventory for two thousand and five and ten inventory update. And, and there's a figure six that shows what our greenhouse gas emissions are for residential and transportation, I'm not exactly sure how that all is calculated, but I'm not going there. What I'm going to is, there's no question that the most significant impact you can have on reducing your residential impact is energy efficiency and, uh, solar panels. And we have a significant number of people that have solar panels, I, I, Menlo Park, I just read a report that Menlo Park has four megawatts of power generated from solar panels in Menlo Park. I don't know exactly what we generate, and we're quite a bit smaller than them, but there's clearly an impact from solar panels, so it would make sense to me that we have a policy that we want to encourage people to put in solar panels, you know?
Mm-hmm.
I think we already have that policy, we decided not to mandate it, but we waived the fees, so we should get greenhouse gas credit for encouraging people to put in solar panels.
Yeah, we waived the permit, we waived the permit, we.
To me, that's number one, and there's something around the energy efficiency, and I know that they've talked about this Atherton twenty twenty program where you, which effectively supports that, and we can talk about that.
On energy efficiency.
But the other really significant thing that isn't in here is to encourage people to purchase electric vehicles, and it's not here. But there's gotta be good greenhouse gas credit, and Atherton wasn't, what, what, last year wasn't the most commonly purchased car in Atherton was the Tesla?
Is it true?
Well, we.
We have the highest.
But when I, I, I brought that.
We have the highest per capita ownership of Teslas in the United States, so we should get greenhouse gas credit for our residents' decisions to buy electric vehicles.
Yeah.
Well, but the converse is true, go ahead.
Well. Right, well, when we first looked at this climate action plan, that's when the first majority of the Teslas sold in America were in Atherton, and that's, I was on the EPC then, and we brought that up. And I said, how do we get credit for that, and she said, you don't, it's based on a percentage of what the fuel efficiency is in every community, up and down, don't you get a percentage? And that's how the numbers of the cars ended up working, it's the same thing with, you know, as, as Jim pointed out, majority of homes in Atherton are either recently built or are at a higher standard of insulation and energy efficiency things, uh, than anywhere else, because the people are more affluent, and so they're keeping their houses up to date. And so, again, that's maybe more concrete, but the, but the, what the, the consultant told us that, as far as travel and things like that, we didn't get a specific credit, now we can maybe ask her to do some.
But can. But, wait, we're getting, we're, we're getting an allocation of transportation, greenhouse gas.
Correct.
Uh, pollution, so we, so it, I'm not saying we should just go get points because our residents are buying these cars, I'm saying is, we should establish a policy that encourages people to do this. And then we should advocate that we get credit for the policy we're putting in place, and let me finish one, sorry, third point, right? There's solar panels, there's electric vehicles, third point, we, PG&E is now about to offer a one hundred percent renewable energy source. And we've just decided that we wanna join Peninsula Clean Energy, which is going to, which we get points for, it's in here, but, uh, Peninsula Clean Energy is going to offer a one hundred percent renewable energy option, which you can opt into. Well, if we had a policy that we were going to encourage residents to opt for the one hundred percent renewable source, that's going to reduce the energy greenhouse gas use at the residential level. And that seems to me to be a policy issue, that if we took that position, we should get greenhouse gas credit for it.
And it's not a mandate.
It's not a mandate, I'm not, I'm not, no, no, I'm trying to win carryover, there's no mandate.
Yeah.
The thing is, after the last meeting, Rick, after the last meeting, I, you know, Lisa and I stayed together with the consultant, and we did, I did point out to her that, um, the clean energy, the experience at Moran and Sonoma were much higher than the numbers and the calculations she had in here, and that she needed to recalculate those things up, and she said she would.
Yes.
Uh, and when they do the final numbers, because she, she was saying one percent would take the hundred percent green, or whatever it was, and the experience is over.
It was a pretty big number in here relative to the other, it was like two thousand.
Yeah, and so, so we did talk about that, plus the experience of, we have a number of net zero commercial buildings in town, and a number of net zero homes in town, and we should
Right.
collect that data from what we've got here, and what our real experience is, and then propagate that forward, as opposed to she just put numbers of one percent.
But that might be how you calculate the numbers issued, the methodology that we discussed last time, I, I think, my guess, I mean, and, and I'm not the expert here, but my guess is, we get credit for the policy. So, we, if we take a position and say, we wanna encourage the new commercial buildings that are built in Atherton to be zero net energy, then we're gonna get some credit for that policy decision. But I don't think we just get to go around and kind of count the buildings that have been built, that people absent us having a policy have decided to do.
And those would be like the Sycamore Heart Library, uh, what other commercial building is a net zero?
Well, that lunch area, that lunch, that lunchroom that they built that's zero, and then also, there may be construction in the near future over at Menlo College.
Oh.
I, I like that as a percentage.
Okay.
Lisa, do we get credit for, uh, forcing private schools to do a reduction in right chairman?
But, that's not existing, I thought you said existing.
Lisa, do we get credit for forcing the private schools to do a reduction in rent sharing? Because we, whenever they do their upgrades, do we calculate those figures when we push?
Yeah, that, that the schools are required to implement TDM programs.
Yeah, the TDM program is, I mean, it's, it's a model, but Sacred Heart is doing it.
Huge.
What does TDM stand for?
Transportation Demand Management Program.
We don't give them any more parking spaces, we say, "You've gotta do it with what you have."
They're, they're spending like fifty thousand dollars, they're, they're really spending real money on this. That doesn't make me feel different.
Yeah, it's because it all circles down to your tuition. It all circles down to your tuition.
That's right.
So, okay.
Is there consensus to add those as policies to encourage?
I think that's a very good point, Rick.
And then I can work with the consultant to see if that helps at all.
Yeah.
Well, the policy for the commercial buildings mandates us to make a net zero building for, for our civic center without knowing how much we're gonna cost, how much it's gonna cost, and we said we would make that decision later. Then I am not in favor of moving forward today with having a policy decision that we want everybody, because we can't encourage other commercial buildings and not do it to ourselves.
Well, it's not a mandate, it's just an encouragement. And it would be, you know-
It would be a mandate to us.
Wait, so that wasn't what I, I didn't advocate that one.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, I advocated that we encourage electric vehicles, we encourage adopting a hundred percent renewable option, and we encourage people to put solar panels on their house.
And we've had that encouragement for solar panels, and we, we've actually given what I believe is a token, you know, incentive, and so
And we encourage electric vehicles too by, at least deciding to put charging stations in the park.
True.
Yeah.
I mean, that's big stuff, but there's some stuff in Don, you remember?
And there's other ways to do that, similar to what you did with the solar panel permit. If you wanted to encourage the installation of electric vehicle charging stations in a residential home, you could waive, exempt, reduce, whatever that permit cost might be.
That's kind of a small one to require, actually.
Yeah, that's, that's in here.
I think so, yeah, just require that.
That's in the plan, and it's not big enough.
It's not a big, it's not big, yeah.
Yeah, I saw that you suggested that the police department have Teslas.
Yeah.
Well, that was a few years ago, let's not go back. So.
So you do run into a little bit of a conflict with the solar panels, because you have the credits for shading trees to cool houses, but yet you wanna clear trees to put in solar panels, so you're kind of sending two different messages.
But can't you balance that?
I think that you probably can balance it, but it's a difficult balance. I think that you're new construction and you're people that are clearing for new construction, because they're putting in new construction, if they create it by their building footprint and solar panels are an option, I would think that that would be, you know, a bonus. Planting immature trees is obviously not gonna affect a heat base of a home for twenty years. So I would think that you kind of have a balance between the two. I guess it would be a planning commission, you know, review, because a lot of people are removing trees that they have to remove to, in order to build the size of the home, the building. So hence, that would be an incentive, if you're gonna remove the trees because you have to, then you should consider solar panels because you're removing something. You know, kind of like a push, you've removed the trees, so because you've removed the trees, maybe solar's a consideration.
But no hook into that policy to require that your neighbor remove their trees if they block your solar?
No, you cannot do that.
I don't think it's legal.
That's not legal.
Right, you don't want to go there.
Uh, yeah.
But in some communities, you know, it, it goes that far, like coastal communities, you know, in certain communities, they require, if your tree grows too high and it blocks the view of the ocean, they can require your neighbor to take his tree down, because he's blocking your view, because it's affecting your privacy.
Yeah, they do, they usually do that based on towns that have view easements, put in their general plan and stuff, and, and if you buy a house and you have a view, you can protect that view, because it's not, you know, government coming in and saying, "I don't care."
All right, all right, okay, we don't, we're not on the coastal, let's not talk about that. So Lisa, can you kind of focus us just a little bit and take us-
Really?
Yeah, please. Back to where we were.
If there was consensus on those items that Councilmember DeGoli, I mentioned about policy to encourage solar residential and commercial, encourage people to purchase electric vehicles, encourage people to use a hundred percent renewable energy.
So.
And see if that gets any points. I mean, I think the solars are already in here.
Well, the energy, the, the electricity, encourage, encourage, I guess, you know, they're gonna have the option with the Peninsula Clean Energy. We have that option, uh, and we're, we're, we're gonna be using renewables, but then there's the, the hundred percent, you know, renewable option, which might cost more. But then if PG&E is gonna offer the same option, you know, but I guess they're gonna give you the old option and then the hundred percent.
But if we had a policy, if we encouraged it in some way, we could figure out how to do that.
Maybe with higher participation.
Maybe it means we put it in the Athertonian, or, I don't know what it is that we do to, to manifest our encouragement, but do we get points?
That's the question.
Well, in her evaluation- That's the way to get more points in that.
In her evaluation, first off, you know, I think that the, the experience in Moran was ten percent. And we asked her to change it from the five or one percent to ten, but if we have a policy, maybe it goes to twenty.
Maybe it goes higher.
Okay, so, that's bad.
I don't see, I don't see a harm in that. If it's written in our climate action plan, that that's our policy, and how we manifest that, how, how we articulate that to our residents. I mean, that's something that we need to then talk about. Maybe we, maybe we encourage it at our Earth Day events, you know, once a year, or something like that.
Handouts, information on the website.
Yeah.
You can embody those kinds of things in resolutions that can then be, you know, handed out to new homeowners or, or to people that come in to, to build a new house, you can say, "Look, it's not mandatory, but it's encouraged."
Okay, so where we left off then was on that table, page five of the table.
Page five of the table, I've got it right here.
EM one, energy efficiency, street lighting.
EM one, I'm at EM two.
Table B?
Oh, see, I think-
We already got through table A, we finished that.
I'm in EM one, uh-
Page four?
On page four.
Yeah, and then if you just, it continues down to page five, so that's where we are.
Okay.
Well, people are asking, can I ask a question? Do, I, we just finished the first hour talking about waste and waste reduction, and I noticed when I went through this plan that it showed, I don't know where their numbers come from, but it showed Atherton's energy use slightly increasing from two thousand and five to two thousand and ten. I don't, I'm not going there, but it showed our, the generated amount of waste and wastewater
I pointed out-
dramatically reduced, went down thirty-one percent.
Yeah, and we can refresh those, those numbers, because again, we started this a few years ago, and some changes, but-
We should get credit for, I mean, that's gotta be a value to this exercise.
Well, and we pointed out also, and she showed, we had like a sixty-seven or sixty-three percent conversion rate, and we're significantly higher than that, so. But before we move on to this, I'd like to go back to the, uh, the, the commercial encouragement for this, for the net zero building, because I believe that it, you know, we would be obligated, really, we passed something and said, "Well, it doesn't apply to us." And I think that really, the commercial encouragement, if you're gonna encourage somebody, you have to do it yourself. And we said that we would look in that, we don't know what the costs are, we don't know what the fundraising, and, and I just, I don't feel good about that aspect. I have no problem with the, at green energy, but I do have a problem with the commercial encouragement at this point in time.
Okay, you're talking, you're, you're responding to DeGoli.
Actually, that came up as a tangent to what I brought up.
Right.
If I could respond, I think we are going forward with the library being zero net energy. We have the money in the library.
We have no issue, if we have the money, then it's great.
Yeah, and that's our, that's our building.
Well, I think that you're right, we're going forward with the library, it's kind of a, I mean, we can't ask somebody to do something or encourage somebody to do something that we're not willing to do ourselves. You're gonna put us into this quandary of, we don't have, if we don't have the money and we don't do it for the rest of the project, what are, what are we gonna look like? I mean, I think that I would hate to create a policy decision until we were able to make that decision where we knew that, that our, our commercial components were gonna all be net zero from this point forward. So I think you're right, it's an unhealthy message, because if we're not willing to do it, or step up to do it, or get the money to do it, I think we're creating a policy that creates a problem for us.
Maybe you could qualify it that we encourage when feasible, and it's just not a blanket, you know, you know, we encourage, or we mandate, you've got to do this. I mean, I think that, no.
It was, I think that was EM one on page four at the top, the voluntary building code for commercial, and it's pretty low, it's seven points, so I don't-
So we're crossing out the mandatory of EM one, right?
Right, but we said, last meeting, we said no to both of them, the mandatory and the voluntary at the last meeting.
EM one to me says streetlights.
Table, B. Well, there's commercial green building one.
On page four, Rick? No, no, you're not on the right one.
I'm on page four, and I don't have word page. So we're all on the page, because I'm on page four too.
Not on the plan.
What, what number is it from the handout, from something that we can refer to?
It was attached to the staff report?
I don't think you have the same.
Good, sir.
There you are.
Yeah, yeah.
Page four.
Well, and on page four, you have, this page four, so there's another section. So I think that what you have here is you have voluntary, but yet in the next section, promote voluntary, go to, to mandate higher.
Where is that?
Well, I think as we pointed out, both of these things were rejected at the last meeting.
So I think the next item we were gonna talk about is the street energy efficiency.
But if I can just say something on, on that, because I thought, what you said, Carrie, I, I totally understand that with respect to the net zero building. But I think what we've decided is, if we can afford it, we will do it. And we don't know if we can aff, and that's a policy decision. And we don't know if we can do it on the police admin building, because of the fundraising problem. We know we can do it on the library, and we're making a policy decision to do it. So I actually think the policy is, we're gonna do it, but it's if we can afford it. And I'm very happy to say to our residents, we want to encourage you to do it, we think it's a good thing if you can afford it.
It's the same thing.
Because that's exactly what we're doing.
So, I, I just, a permit question. So say the circus club wants to do an addition, would that trigger a net zero component for that, once it's an addition, and it's not a new addition?
No, 'cause it's not, no, it's not mandated.
I don't have any direction from the council yet. If it's a mandatory, then it depends on how we define it, right? If it's an addition or new construction. Voluntary, no, of course not, we were just saying, "Oh, we really like you to do this." And we have handouts and explain the benefits of it.
Well, we're even, not even that strong, we don't have to say, "We'd like you to do it," we can just say, "We encourage you to do it." But it's up to you, we're doing it when we can afford it.
But then, and the other part of the encouraging is, you, we have more information, maybe there's a little station there that shows the benefits of it.
Well, the circus club could definitely afford it, the question is.
Well, it's, and Sacred Heart, you know, they're new.
Sacred Heart definitely can afford a lot of stuff too, whether or not-
They've got big tuitions that are paying.
And going higher.
Okay.
I think in twelve years, Sacred Heart-
So, we should go back to the EM one.
We're actually doing it when we can afford it.
Yeah, we're going back to the EM one, commercial green building ordinance for construction and major additions. So if we rewrite the voluntary, you know, promote, instead of promote, we could say encourage voluntary building code, wait a minute, that's not what I'm saying.
You're saying encourage the building to, encourage the building to higher building performance codes for commercial buildings?
Performance codes, yeah.
Remove, require fifty percent parking, remove ten percent charging.
Yeah, because that requires the infrastructure to go in, whether you do it or not.
Yeah.
And I would, whenever we get some voluntary, I would have, I would not have the word mandate in the-
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, so-
It does say require fifty percent, but I believe that's a state law now, I don't believe that we're doing anything that makes them do something that's almost-
Well, that, that has to be identified, and if it's, and, you know, if it, if it is from, per state requirement, it has to say in there, "Per state requirement," so that everybody knows this, okay?
But you don't, that's repetitious to code. You don't need to put a tree down.
But we didn't know that it, and so we're about to delete it from our policy.
Well, the, the county department knows that they, what the code is, and they tell people.
Doesn't matter if you delete it or not, but the reality is, it's already in code, it's already in code per bill, per the building department.
I think what we're doing with this one is just, for lack of a better word, dumbing it down to encourage and
so now we're yes on the voluntary.
Yes.
Encourage use of green building code for higher building performance in new commercial or major additions. Promote achievement in net zero energy standards.
Right.
So yes?
Yeah, that sounds good.
I have a question.
Well, the, the language in the top one, the introductory word is mandatory.
Yes.
And the language in the bottom one with the introductory word, voluntary, is identical. There's no difference in any of that language. And one of them gets a hundred and thirty-six credits, and the other gets seven.
Because one says voluntary in front of it, and the other says mandatory.
Yeah, because they're, they're making an assumption on how many people are gonna participate, and then I'm gonna try to convince our consultant that we have very good participation experience, a fluid, highly educated community.
But why don't we mandate out of the second one, because that, you know-
Yeah, she's got it.
She is, she got it.
Okay.
So that's why.
I think we're good on that one.
So sorry, I'm under the, I thought what George said, and what I understood, is we're actually fine as far as the points go. Okay, yes. So we should be focused on what we think is right at this point, or we shouldn't be chasing points, okay?
Right.
Correct.
I'm good.
The consultant will get the points.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, okay, so now we're gonna go to-
Streetlights?
Efficient, energy efficient street lighting measures, EM one, energy efficient street lighting.
So we have done some of that, um, and maybe like the voluntary, replace streetlights, were feasible.
You get the same credit for whether it's voluntary.
And where is that?
I would say- Why go, why go with the gray when you can get the green for the same price?
And we have been doing it.
I don't see a green on here.
But I would say that it's voluntary when the lights are out.
So, no, it didn't print.
I would say that it's voluntary when the lights are out, not to go out and replace bulbs that are still currently working.
Well, in some cases, we need to do a little retrofit work.
That's when they-
Well, I'm going with the federal.
But what he's saying is, we don't just go out and wholesale replace all the lights. When there's a problem, we replace them.
Or, or we have a program, it's a return on investment, we'll replace them.
No.
Just like we have in our capital improvement plan.
I'm sorry, just- Yeah, the ball goes out, replace it with an energy efficient bulb.
Energy measures.
Okay.
So some are like a-
There's RMs for residential, I was going through that somewhere else, somewhere.
Yeah, some are energies, some are different.
Okay, so this-
So we're yes on the voluntary streetlights.
Is EM one and EM two are the same, so we're gonna not look at the EM one, which is in the gray?
Correct, we're gonna go with EM two.
We're gonna go to EM two?
And we said yes to the green.
And we said yes to the green.
To the voluntary, yeah.
Okay.
But we also made sure that when the lights are out.
I'm not writing that down.
You'll tell Steve Tyler that.
I'll tell Steve.
Lisa, just for some, just for some clarity, if you look at EM four, and then the second EM four, there's like three colors of EM four, they're both the same thing, three lines are saying essentially the same sort of thing. The top one, like the energy efficient streetlight one.
Yeah.
There's EM one.
It was, because, you know, we had three different versions, and we were trying to-
Okay, so I'm gonna do EM four, I'm just gonna do this here.
Yeah, it'll be clean when it comes back, I'm sorry.
And then, okay, so renewable energy installation on municipal property. Mandatory, voluntary.
Install solar or renewable energy.
Okay, so I'm not, I'm not sure where it says-
Feasible means possible, so that's almost always, unless there's a tree blocking, it's done for the whole structure.
Were feasible?
Well, we're gonna do, we're going to install solar and energy efficiency at town, does this mean every town facility?
Says all.
Yes.
Why wouldn't you just look into it or consider it, instead of saying, "Were feasible," because if it's feasible, then you're gonna be almost implied.
I thought feasible now.
Feasible can also be financial.
That's, yes, it's not just if it's po, where possible.
The definition of feasible is where possible.
Okay, we're feasible and financial. Okay, where feasible and financially possible.
There you go.
Okay, so take out all town facilities?
No, no, no. I would leave all town facilities, where feasible and financially possible.
Be careful, because we have a bunch of historic buildings in the park that you're gonna have to.
Probably not possible, but.
Yeah, see, that's.
But then it's not feasible.
Sure, if you can go down there and put them right up on the top of your.
It's not financially possible.
And it's legal and it's feasible, but you, you don't wanna draft yourself into a corner.
Can't we just say investigate?
Consider.
Consider to install solar or other renewable energy projects at all town facilities.
Consider installation.
And keep it under mandatory.
At the time.
It can be mandatory, we have to consider it at all the.
Consider installing solar.
Well, we can do that in all facilities.
Consider installation, consider.
Well, I think you would normally consider it anyways, so voluntarily consider it, mandatory just implies you.
How about review and consider all facilities for the possible.
We're gonna look at.
Relation of, uh, solar.
Consider installation of solar or other renewable energy product, pro, projects.
Well, that's all options we're doing.
Right, solar.
Consider.
Well, I like consider.
I did, why don't we set, not say at all town facilities, just say at major town facilities, okay? Then we, then we, then.
Mm, no.
Well, you don't wanna put solar panels on the carriage house, for example.
Or, or the, uh.
Or the, or, or, or the. Tower.
Or the, um, park yard.
Well, why don't you say where reasonable?
Yeah, exactly.
You know, where reasonable, architecturally reasonable.
Imagine, imagine it discretionary, not mandatory now, which is fine, that's what you want.
No, I think we should make it mandatory to consider the installation of solar, other renewable energy projects at all town facilities.
You're legalizing.
We can even consider it at the park yard.
Just considering it.
Well, okay, uh, I, I think we should evaluate whether there's, whether there's an ROI return, or, or a good return to put solar.
I gotta look at enough points for this.
Well, how about financially feasible?
How about analyze?
How about, we're practical?
Broaden.
Financially feasible or practical? I like that.
Well, practically good word, because.
Practical works.
It's very subjective.
We don't even have to condition it with considers, just we're practical.
Well, if you broaden it to analyze at the time, you're gonna consider upgrades, broaden it even further, which you're gonna consider, so analyze.
Okay.
And then, do you also want the electric car charging?
No, I don't, I don't understand really where we're putting them, in and around town. Where is that? Is that like three on every street?
Well, we're putting two in the park.
The park and the, the civic center.
And we're gonna put them here.
It says around town.
Yeah.
I would say on town.
I think around town doesn't work.
Around town's not good, on town.
Why don't we go back to Rick's, consider installation in town or practical?
How about?
Well, I think that's, that's part of the preamble.
We don't even have to consider. It's supposed to be at town facilities, where practical.
Okay.
Yes, okay. And I don't think we need to give free wifi there, we can scratch the wifi, I brought that up before.
Okay.
Well, there's a system more tired.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Um, and then I understand on EM five from Steve Tyler that we have done that. So we may wanna leave that in. We have audited the town facilities and we have implemented some. We may wanna go through and kind of refresh that.
Okay, good.
But that's kind of a, you know, you're just auditing it.
All right, great, moving on.
EM five, energy efficiency in municipal buildings.
So the audit one, that's good. Mandatory, you probably don't want those.
Should we just go back to EM five?
Yeah, so, I think there's, there's three options on EM five, there's three options.
We're not.
I'm doing this. I remember. Yeah, but the first one on page five.
So we said yes to audit the facilities, because we've done that, we could do it again if we need to go. And then, do you wanna do the mandatory or the voluntary?
Well, on the voluntary, my concern on the voluntary is that it says if financially feasible, and while I'm okay with that, I think we should also take into consideration.
Well, that's fine.
The future plans of the, for the facilities. So for example, do we wanna go do some upgrade to our emergency center, response center, when we're gonna knock it down?
Correct.
We should say, well, no, we're gonna knock that thing down, or do we wanna do something specific?
Well, you could use Mike's term, just say if practical, and that gives us the control.
Okay.
Where practical.
We're practical.
All right.
And so you're gonna add that in the voluntary.
Encourage new facilities to be at zero?
I put it mandatory, what the heck, if it's practical, we're gonna make a judgment, that can be financial or functional.
Right. Where practical. But you see, you're, I, I think by adding that caveat on, uh, no, but I think it, it, it makes it voluntary, and so you don't get your big points.
Yeah, maybe it's just on.
Yeah. So we're saying yes to the encourage new town facilities to be built to net zero, where practical?
And financially feasible.
Yeah, that stays in the next sentence.
I think.
It's there, yeah, okay.
It's there.
Good.
Okay.
It's, it's not there. It's just, encourage all new town facilities to be built to net zero energy where practical or they're financially feasible.
Oh, so we'll just add it on the first line?
Older.
Is the reference, yeah, okay, so we have to add the financially feasible after the.
So add it to the first line too.
Yeah.
And practical, right. Yeah, so we need to let you build one, you're gonna knock it over.
And then the shade trees.
Deciduous safety.
Where's shade trees?
Uh, right here, this, right here, EM six, implement.
EM six.
EM six, okay.
I think there's more than one.
So.
There's only one, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One bar.
I'm all in favor.
And that's a municipal program, so that's a town program.
I'm all in favor of the town planting trees all over the place, and then they have to take responsibility for maintaining them.
Correct, yes.
We plant them, we own.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm in favor of that, plant them.
Good.
You like owning them?
No, I just wanted to point that out.
Okay.
Let's move on.
So yes on that, okay?
Well, I don't know, if everybody agreed.
Increase the tree maintenance budget.
Remake urban landscape.
Well, you know, it comes, it's a double edged sword, because, you know, we own them, we're liable for them.
Is this an Atherton document?
Yes, there's an Atherton.
It's only Atherton.
We don't have an urban, I mean, I don't, I don't see us as having an urban landscape.
Oh, we do.
I thought we were semi rural.
We can take the word urban.
We can change that.
Yeah.
Yeah, use a different descriptor in there.
Well, did we close off on the trees?
Yeah, we did.
Does everybody wanna put, have the town take responsibility?
Remake urban landscape.
Okay.
Well, I think that, uh.
Okay, no problem, that's all we have.
I think it means, I think it's like the. Public landscape.
Well, a lot of its town facilities too.
Well, when you, when you say shade trees, you're really referring to evergreen.
No?
Deciduous, just say deciduous.
Deciduous.
It can be deciduous.
Shade, shade trees.
I'm not tall.
Because it doesn't matter, you, you don't, the evergreens, you don't get the benefit in the winter, you get it in the sun.
Yeah, you wanna get the sun.
That's when you get, that's when the deciduous trees have leaves out.
Yeah, you need to say deciduous trees.
But really, does shade trees matter in public right of ways?
TL two, TL one.
Oh, yes, they do.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
No different.
Uh huh.
And we'll have to increase our street cleaning budget.
Do they matter? They all matter.
Maybe not, maybe not in your neighborhood, Carrie, because.
Two hundred thirty-three.
I've got trees every block.
Well, but, you know, come down on the flats with us.
The practical implementation of that measure.
Well, you have, there's.
I planted sixty trees on my property. It was a, there was a dirt of trees. Yeah, there was no trees.
Which one?
Really?
Wow.
Trees. Really?
Yeah, there was no trees.
I had twelve trees on my property when I bought it.
Yeah, what did you say?
I had twelve when I bought it.
The practical implementation of planting trees, I would suggest we incorporate that as part of the pedestrian plan with the town park developer out there, according in DG pathways.
Yeah.
In somebody's frontage, that would be the appropriate time to consider putting a tree in, because we're maintaining that pathway as well.
Let it make sense at the time, yeah.
Yeah, we're not, we're not gonna launch a program on it.
Okay.
Make a staff decision.
So.
So I think the next two are essentially the same, so maybe it was wordsmith, whichever one you like better.
They look the same. Well, you get more points in the second one percent, oh, maybe because they didn't consider twenty thirty in the first one.
So my only comment on this one was that, uh, I thought that we have a million dollars to do bike lanes, but then when we started looking at where we were putting them. It was like the, the first major implementation was gonna cost six million dollars, so I just don't know that our million dollars is gonna get us two hundred and thirty-three points, but maybe it will. I would think that if we say we're going to do something and we're getting credit for having it done by twenty twenty, I agree with George and Bill's comments that we don't have to do it right away. I would think you'd have to do it by twenty twenty.
We need to have the intention.
Well, yeah, I think if we have the intention is, is the important thing, and we can say, when financially, financially feasible.
So George, I think the difference is, TL one is do it faster.
Yeah.
TL two is kind of assuming our, as we're going.
What's again, what are the TR and TL? Transportation.
Transportation, thank you.
And, but what's TL then?
I don't know.
There's a legend somewhere.
There's a legend, yeah.
Landscape.
I couldn't find one, I, I.
Transportation and landscape.
I found one that talks about RM, residential, and.
And you're gonna change the urban word?
Yes, we'll wordsmith that one.
It's within the saving itself.
So this is bike and car sharing measures.
I, I, I think we shouldn't do these.
I'm, I'm not sure how that would work in.
In our town, bike and car sharing.
The bike and car sharing.
No, I don't think we should do that. But we should put bike racks in front of the town hall.
Yeah, that one's good.
Yes.
Well, yeah.
I never have the place to put my bike.
So we're just crossing out TL three and TR two?
Yeah.
Yes.
Safe routes to school?
Work with safe routes to school.
We're doing that.
We're doing that.
So I think, you know.
Yeah, we're doing TL six.
But it has to say, but it says again, you know, based on budget, it's budget driven implementation. For TL six, right?
Yeah.
Nine.
And TR three, we're doing.
Yeah, but I, I don't think you have to condition it with budget, because it, it already says capital improvement proj, project is budgeted a million dollars. And we're doing it, we said safer to schools was the priority.
Right, but we don't have enough money to do all the.
So we'll do what we can do.
That's why I just said we're practical and feasible.
Okay. Employee commuting, this is the purchase of a Tesla for this.
I don't think that the taxpayer should be paying for funding bus and train tickets for employees.
Okay, so it was, yeah.
It's not electric vehicles.
There's no point, there's no point value in those things then. Yeah.
Did you get one, yeah. So should we just?
It's, I mean, it's kinda difficult given the small town.
Yeah.
We don't have employees.
Okay, so no.
So can I, can I actually suggest one there that may or may not give us points? How about investigate the town's participation in a county program for busing and ride sharing programs, county driven program, not a town driven program?
Yeah.
The county's investigating a regional Uber bus opportunity for county employees.
Sure.
It might provide a benefit to the town if we could become a member of that.
Right, so.
As long as it doesn't come with cost.
Right.
And you know, if our residents wants to, uh, you know, have the town provide shuttle service for schoolchildren.
Well, let's not go there.
Excuse me.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, maybe they'll stop by sacred.
So supporting measures, do we need to consider supporting measures?
Well, our higher solid waste measures, we're on solid waste.
We're on number ten.
Yeah, so we're, you're said we're already adding more than five percent diversion.
Page ten.
Yeah.
The waste.
Higher solid waste diversion measures. Okay, Bill, this is your, um.
Well, I think we can get up to eighty-six, but, you know, our, our, our waste diversion has gone down with the drought. And people changing their, their landscapes, so, you know, I think making a commitment to stay over eighty percent is, is a good thing.
It's a lot of points.
I would never say a hundred percent.
Yeah, why don't we just maintain?
So eighty-six?
Greater than, why, can we just use?
We're about eighty-six now.
Well, we're eighty-six.
I know, we're really close, right?
Well, but here's the thing, it's, uh, maintain a, a, a percentage greater than eighty, we're already doing it, but that also means we're greater than.
It's a goal. It doesn't mandate us to do it, it's a goal.
It's, it's a thousand points.
Well, if we can get the commercial to do the organics like we talked about, we can get up to, to eighty-six. We can get up to eighty-six.
So let's go for it.
I think we should. I think we should put ninety percent.
No, that's, that's good enough, that's good enough, let's go for it, WC one.
I don't wanna do a hundred. No, we could never do a hundred.
WC one.
About a hundred and ten.
No?
Sure we could.
Okay.
It would, could be a goal.
Okay, go.
WC fields, the way we go.
Are you, do you get points though if you call it a goal?
It's all a goal, yes, yes.
Well, why, then?
Double our points and go to a hundred.
Put any number you want, it's a goal.
It doesn't.
Well.
It's the same.
We'd wanna do something that's.
Six or.
Raise your real life.
Let's do the eighty-six is a thousand points, so it's.
So, it's good. So commercial recycling ordinance?
Wait a minute, so the WR one.
WC one.
We're just crossing that one out. Okay, right.
Okay, so the commercial ordinance, we already have one, as I mentioned in our, in my pitch.
What?
It's a supporting measure.
We have a commercial, yeah, but we have that.
State law.
We have a.
New state law.
Yeah. And there's a new one, the, the one I just, AB, whatever, eighteen twenty-six.
Yeah, and these are all the things that since they're, oh, they're supporting other things that are in there, so there's not really a point associated with it.
So these will all disappear.
So we're gonna take it out?
We're doing WC one, we approved WC one.
I know, but I don't know why we would take it out if it's, well. If it's already being done, and, you know, as part of supporting another thing that we've got in here already, so. It, it just seems like it should be in here.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in here.
So WC two is in here, because it's already it being done. WC three is a no brainer, and I think we do some of it, but we need to get different containers out at the park.
Right. Okay.
Okay, in many cases, we just have beverage and waste. We need to actually get the three types of container.
And the number three, uh, the mandatory, we're not doing that. Require recycling at all major public events, including at schools?
I think. Well, I think requiring it is just saying, we'll have the three containers, when we have a public event, we have to scratch out schools, because we don't do that.
Well, require is man- mandatory, we have adopted ordinance, and we have to create a penalty, so, I mean.
Okay, then we don't want.
I think those are correct on that one, because they're.
So we could do, well, we could require it, uh, when we rent, when we lease out the park events. We could say you shall recycle, here's the containers to you.
Close, close the, like, we're allowed to provide containers.
Correct, but then not have it on the W, on the next one, which talks about the schools and other events.
Is there a reasonable way we can get the schools to do it?
Well, we need to talk about that later, I think.
So is WC three that we're adopting then?
The top one, the vendor policy for public events.
It's, it's.
Well, then there's no recycling stuff.
Doesn't that drive?
It drives me crazy. A quick point on the public thing is I walk my dog all the time. I'm not sure if the bags we can wear are compostable, which means you throw, you take organic dog material and you stick it in a plastic thing, which you then have to throw in the garbage can.
But you can't put your organic dog material in a garbage bag.
It does, really, why is that?
Yes, because it's, it's unhe- yeah. Do you put your dog poop in your compostable?
I put it in.
No, because it's a plastic bag.
No, but at home.
It's in a plastic bag at home too, what are you talking about?
Oh, good.
WC four?
No, I, I need to go back to WC three, there's a section.
Put it in the garbage can.
The WC three, which is require compostable and recyclable silverware and food takeout packaging.
Yeah, that's where, that was bad, why is it bad?
It's contaminable, it's unhealthy.
Eliminate that.
Eliminate it.
Okay.
Do I think we should?